Shortly after six o'clock, I will call the August 13th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who missed the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using Zoom Then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the Zoom ID is 894-83946920. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Okay, everyone's here this evening. Upcoming events: The town of Franklin will be holding a biennial town election on November 4th, 2025. Nomination papers are now available by appointment only and must be submitted to the town clerk's office by September 15th, 2025 for certification. If you're interested in running for office, please contact our town clerk office for more information, and I'm sure she's going to get up in a few minutes and give you much more information than I just gave you. The Franklin Farmers Market and Concerts on the Common will both be taking place this Friday, August 15th. The Farmers Market runs from 2:00 to 6:00, and the concert performance will begin at 3:00. This Friday, August 15th, will be the last concert on the Common of the summer. The summer's gone. The Department of Veteran Services will be holding a discussion of VA and state survivor benefits at the Franklin Senior Center on Monday, September 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. The discussion is open to veterans, service members, spouses, and their children, and we ask you to please RSVP by calling 508-613-1315. And the last community event I have in front of me is the 2025 Arts and Culture Symposium is making a call for artists for a print pop-up exhibition on September 18th, 2025. The pop-up celebrates works on paper as a dynamic intersection of art, design, and cultural storytelling. For more information, please visit the Arts and Culture and Creative Economy page on the town website. And that's it for community events. And before I go to citizens' comments, more announcements from the chair, and I'll let our town clerk, Nancy Donello, enlighten you even more on the upcoming election.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. So I'm Nancy Donello, and I am your town clerk, here to give you an update on the upcoming biennial election that will be held on November 4th at the Franklin High School from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The following are some important dates to remember. August 4th through September 15th nomination papers may be filed in the clerk's office. They must be returned by September 15th by 4:00 p.m. for certification. So if you're interested in serving the community on one of our elected boards or committees, please contact me as soon as possible, and I will set up a time to meet with you and go over what needs to be done for your name to appear on the ballot. September 22nd is the last day to withdraw your candidacy. So if you're contemplating withdrawing, please let me know on or before the 22nd, because I will be ordering the ballots on the 23rd. Once the ballots arrive, we will then begin processing all of the vote-by-mail requests. And please remember, if you want to vote by mail, you have to submit a request in writing. I'm not just going to mail out ballots. It all has to be in writing, okay? So an application needs to be prepared. In-person early voting will then begin in the clerk's office on October 17th through October 31st during business hours. And again, it's going to be here in the clerk's office. Saturday, October 25th, we will also be hosting in-person early voting again here in the clerk's office, and that is also the last day to register to vote. So between 9:00 and 3:00, you can come in and register to vote and also vote in person if you choose to do so. And then between 3:00 and 5:00, we will also be holding voter registration. That will be by appointment only. So if you plan to come in after 3:00 to register to vote, you need to call me and make an appointment. The following are the number of seats that will be on the ballot. So Board of Assessor, we have one seat. Board of Health, one seat. Planning Board, two seats. Planning Board Associate, one seat. School Committee, seven seats. Town Clerk, one seat. Town Council, nine seats. If you're interested in seeing who has pulled papers for these positions, please visit the town clerk's website at franklinma.gov and then navigate to the town clerk's page. As always, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to us via email or by phone, 508-520-4900. And I do have a guide that's posted on the website as well on how you can register to file for a candidate. So call me, email me, whatever you would like, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time that you've given me, members of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, and we'll look forward to seeing you on September 3rd at our next meeting.
Absolutely. I'll be here.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Open Meeting Law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council may ask the town administrator to review the matter, and nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Jane, please, name and address, please.
Jane Callaway-Trippe, 607 Maple Street. Actually, here in regards to 440 East Central Street Project. When this was brought to the council and it was voted on, it was originally a three-story building. It has now been changed to a four-story building along with, I believe, 33 variances. This is not what was approved by this council. So I'm asking the council to void their vote, take a vote to void their vote through the state, and have that brought back, because the project that is now going forward is not the one that was approved. And the residents in this town do not want this, and you have an opportunity to listen to us and do the right thing. No project should have 33 or 37 variances. That's unacceptable. If you have to make that many changes, it's not a stable project. And four-story buildings are not welcome in Franklin. It's not the way we want to look. So I'm asking you, if you can, to please put this forward, bring it back to a vote to void your original vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Is there anyone else? Please, name and address.
Jean Grelle, 36 Red Gate Lane. I want you to guess what I'm going to talk about. The Stobarts Project was sold to us as a friendly 40B, but it's been nothing but friendly. When it was first presented to the planning board, the conservation commission, and the town council, it consisted of three-story buildings, and the developer was requesting at that time 18 waivers from our bylaws. At that time, 18 waivers already seemed excessive, but since then, the number has grown from 18 to 30, and the buildings are now all four stories tall, all not in compliance with Franklin bylaws. To make matters worse, in order to get closer to the town's requirement of two parking spaces per apartment, the developer designed a single-four-story, 72-unit building just 80 feet from the abutters property line. Directly on that property line is a parking lot, no buffer whatsoever. In fact, the distance from a single-family home to the largest building in that development is less than 200 feet. How is that friendly? The traffic study is another concern. The company that conducts most traffic studies in our town determined that this project would meet minimal acceptable standard of grade of D. But let's be clear, this is a subjective standard. It's considered an acceptable wait time. From my perspective, and I'm sure many of you share it, traffic is already bad, and the project will only make it worse. For those of you not familiar with the waivers being requested, here are just eight examples out of the 30. No building over three-story tall, waiver. Minimum side yard setback of 30 feet, waiver. No building, parking lot, or leaching field within 35 feet of a stream, waiver. Requirement for two parking spaces per apartment, waiver. One tree per 20 parking spaces, waiver. Limiting impervious coverage to 80% subject to a hydrologist approval, waiver. Minimal wetland replication, two to one, which was sold to our conservation commission for destroyed wetlands, waiver. Requirement to obtain a permit from DPW, waiver. According to the ZBA handbook, when assessing a project's effect on nearby residents or a neighborhood, the ZBA can and should consider: Design and character compatibility, whether scale, height, and massing fit the surrounding area; Traffic and safety, whether additional vehicle trips create documented safety hazards; Environmental impacts such as flooding risk. This site lies in a FEMA flood zone; Stormwater runoff; and destruction of important natural resources. And finally, public health, including effects on water quality, wastewater disposal, or emergency access. This project fails in multiple categories. The residents of Franklin are asking the town council to rescind their vote of the approval for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Please, name and address.
David Dorian, 14 Russet Hill Road in Franklin. I'm going to just say that these two people here really did a good job, and I'm not going to reread everything that we just heard, out of respect for the council and their time and the good people in this room. But this town does not want this project. You all know that it's not what was sold to us. We didn't like it then, and we like it a lot less now. And I'm parroting what they said. You need to rescind that vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please, name and address, please.
Hello, council. I'm Sarah Cronin. I live at 46 Northern Spy Road. I'm also concerned about the project at 444 East Central, and I will try to not repeat what has been said, but I apologize if some is repetitive. I'm not in a butter to this project, but I care deeply about the town of Franklin. Many, many changes have been made to the site plan since the developer came before you last spring. And I know at this stage in the process, the ZBA is the only town body who can approve or deny this project, so I appreciate your patience and willingness to allow all of us to share with you today. My concerns are not in any particular order. I do have a couple rhetorical questions in there. I know you can engage with me, and I will make a request to this council at the end. So one of my concerns is the scale and sheer number of apartment buildings recently built on Central Street and Route 140, knowing that half of this road is state road and half of the road is town road. In the past couple of years, we've watched five to six buildings go up within one mile of each other between downtown and here. Buildings like these have already changed the character of this side of town, and if approved, the 444 East Central project would add another four or five buildings to this mile. And they would be the tallest buildings in town, and they're highly visible. You're going to see them in those windows right behind you. Another concern is one that impacts all of our residents, and that's the traffic. The newest buildings have already filled the roads in the past couple of years, and it's very, very congested. The traffic study, their suggestions, I felt were weak, in my opinion. They want to promote walking and cycling, and they want to add sidewalks and bike racks, but I posit that that location is over a mile from the train, and this is a commercial district, so there are curb cuts all up and down this mile of road, so it's actually kind of unsafe to ride your bike or to walk. And it's New England, so walking and biking are not really likely between November and May, November and March. The developer did offer us something, though. He said he'd pay $15,000 to change the timing of the lights on this road, the ones that the town owns, not the state. But $15,000, that's kind of short money. Like, I bet we can all fundraise to pay for that. I don't think we need to take this project so that we can get our lights changed. It's not an incentive for Franklin. And I wonder whose priorities are taking precedence as this process continues to go forward month after month? Are we doing Franklin's priorities or Tag LLC? You've heard that they're asking for all of these waivers. Last week...
You need to finish...
Okay, is it three minutes yet? I kind of timed it at home to practice.
And I'll let you finish your thought. Not an issue.
Thank you. Okay. So we watched at ZBA them give this guy, they raked a resident over the coals because he wanted to add three feet to his porch. Unfair, unfair. Okay, we are not trying to block anything from being built. We're just raising the red flag that this project, in its current form, does not suit Franklin anymore. It's too big. It should be reduced in size. Here's my ask. I am asking for your representation and for your support. ZBA is the only town body who can make a move here, but the TA appoints them, and you guys confirm them, so they listen to you. That's a fact. You've heard from many residents, you've seen many signatures on the petitions.
I really have to get you to finish up.
We don't want another complex. Please let the ZBA and our town's residents know your opinions on this project, especially given the changes made during the eligibility process. If you opposed the project before, or if you've been listening to our concerns and changed your mind, I implore you, please publicly withdraw your support for this project.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Please, name and address.
Yes, thanks. Steve Malloy, 19 Russet Hill Road. I'll be very quick, just to expand on what everybody else has talked to, not in the detail. More broadly across the town, people are very dissatisfied with the large apartment buildings that are going up. I know you know that. I've heard some of you say it's had an impact on the override vote that failed. Withdrawing support for this, somehow finding a way to pull it back, change it, create something there that's more in scale, I think goes a long way towards building up some trust and some credibility across a broad population of Franklin residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else? Please.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's why they're called citizens' comments.
Richard Strat, 10 Hayden Lane. I also want to speak on this project, and I'm also not in a butter, but I'd also like to request the town council rethink this and give its voice to the town. You know, what I think what I thought has not been said so far, and I think needs to be said, is that there's a recognition that the town council did act in good faith in thinking about the upcoming and future housing needs of Franklin. This is not, in the sentiment of a lot of us, a vote against renting in general or against affordable housing. It's just this particular project with this particular scale is way out of proportion to what works for that particular site. That and the potential environmental hazards, danger, flooding danger, hazards to the well, and then traffic dangers are traffic problems, are reasons for concern. So I'd like to join the other town residents in requesting that if there's not at least a vote to rescind, at least a non-binding sense of the town council would be appreciated by the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please, name and address for anybody who doesn't know who you are, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Schurrock, 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director for Franklin Mass News. Little sports rally. People want to know who we are, who we are, so we tell them, so we tell them we are Franklin Mass News, the mighty multimedia community news. So Franklin Mass, for those who need to know, is the umbrella for three of Franklin's trusted sources of timely and accurate information delivered without ads. Franklin TV doing the broadcast tonight, as you've listed, to YouTube as well. We're a peg station, public, education, government, three channels for cable. Three channels says well to YouTube. So this is built on Zoom immediately to cable, immediately to YouTube, so if all that works, no gremlins are in the lines, you can immediately see the replay at the end of the evening. Franklin Public Radio, yes, we do have a broadcast station here in Franklin, anytime, anywhere available at WFR, FranklinPublicRadio.fm, or in the local Franklin Mass FM radio dial, you have the thing you turn, 102.9. Many of the locally produced radio shows, music shows, interview shows are also available via podcast. Yes, that thing on your app, you can go listen to it. And then, of course, Franklin Matters, which I lead, the digital news journalism reporting on town meetings, events, and sharing all the goodness produced by the rest of the cable organization. We're living up to the charter to amplify the public good. You can find us online at Franklin.News or try the Watch, Listen, Read three-column format at FranklinMattersWeekly.org. In mindful of the overwhelming information that's coming up all the time, we've reintroduced, on Sunday, you get one email, gives you an outlook on the important meetings of the week, and a look back on the important meetings prior. One email, one day, you get it all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
I want one.
One?
There's a hand up. John Johnson.
John, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, this is John Johnson at 23 Northern Spy Road in Franklin. I just wanted to echo everything that was said about the Stobarts Project. You know, I think it's important to realize that the building was originally approved for three stories, and now they're asking for four, and there's over 30 waivers. And I think there's a, you know, there's a town well on site, too. It's just a concern about who's going to actually enforce, making sure the town well, all the restrictions are actually followed through on that. And I just think it would be important to have some representation from our town council for what the citizens' wishes are. It's not that we're wishing to not have anything there, it's just I think the scale is important to take into account. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on I don't see anything, do you, Amy? Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes, we have... Approval of minutes, we have none this evening. We do have a couple of proclamations. And the first proclamation is for a very good friend, John J. Bird Simons. I'd ask him to come forward.
They're buying coffee in the morning.
I told him he's buying coffee for the week. Okay, Town of Franklin, a proclamation honoring John J. Bird Simons on the occasion of his retirement from the Franklin Department of Public Works. Whereas John J. Bird Simons, a lifetime resident of the Town of Franklin, joined the Franklin Department of Public Works on October 27, 1998, and after over 26 years of dedicated service, retired on August 1, 2025. And whereas for many, for more than 26 years of service, J. Bird excelled in all the tasks that were asked of him and was a reliable and invaluable member of the Department of Public Works. And whereas throughout his tenure, J. Bird wore many different hats, but is most known for his role as markout technician. When an official markout technician position was created in the Water Division, he was the obvious choice to fill it. And whereas as markout technician, J. Bird had the perfect attitude to work with contractors while simultaneously ensuring resident satisfaction in the protection of hundreds of miles of underground water, sewer, and drain infrastructure. And whereas for over 26 years, John J. Bird Simons was a dedicated and valued member of the Franklin Department of Public Works whose commitment and contributions to the department and the community are greatly appreciated. And he is wished many happy years and his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore be it known that John J. Bird Simons is hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for over 26 years of dedicated service with the Franklin Department of Public Works and congratulated on his retirement. Signed, Thomas D. Mercer, Chairman, Franklin Town Council. Thank you very much. And for those of you who know J. Bird, Bay Two is open after the meeting. Okay, next proclamation for Sumai Jani and Andrew Barros. I've asked Counselor Jones to read that proclamation. If you'd come forward, please.
You guys ready?
Yep.
First off, thanks for coming tonight. Good to have you guys here. This is such an honor for me to read this for you, so. Town of Franklin, proclamation honoring Sumai Jani and Andrew Barros. Is that correct? Did I say those correctly? In recognition of their volunteer service to the Franklin community and their success as young entrepreneurs. Whereas in 2023, Sumai Jani and Andrew Barros were 14-year-old freshmen at Franklin High School when they started a student-run DJing business known as DJ Sam and Andy, which is now known as SNND Events. And whereas over the past two years, Sumai and Andrew have been working hard to develop their skills, grow their business, while also giving back to the Franklin community. Since 2023, Sumai and Andrew have volunteered at more than 20 community events hosted by the Franklin Public Library, Franklin Public Schools, the Santa Foundation, the Indian Culture Association of Franklin, and the Franklin Cultural Council, where they contributed more than 50 hours of free DJ and event production services while bringing joy to hundreds of local children and families. Where Sumai and Andrew have proven themselves to be driven and hard-working individuals, undoubtedly, dedicated to supporting the community of Franklin with their passion for DJ services and event productions. Now, therefore be it known that Sumai Jani and Andrew Barros are hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for their outstanding service to the Town of Franklin through their work with SNND Events. Thank you, guys.
Smartest people in the room. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is appointments and reappointments of town board and committee members. And I would ask the clerk to read the appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is committee appointments for August 13, 2025. The town administrator has appointed the following individuals to serve on town boards and committees with terms effective August 13, 2025. Name, I'm going to give the name, the street address, and the term to which they expire. Community Preservation Committee, Christopher Feely, Housing Authority 17, Tuscan Drive, June 30, 2026. Mike Giordini, Citizen at Large, 18 Sherman Ave., June 30, 2027. Phyllis Malcolm, Historical Commission, 37 Alka-Sav, June 30, 2026. Jay Mello, Plan A Board, 15 North Park Street, June 30, 2026. Lisa Oxford, Citizen at Large, 18 Lincoln Street, June 30, 2027. And the Council on Aging, James Lane, 154 Long Hill Road, to expire on June 30, 2028. Design Review Commission, Kyle Galvin of 27 Church Ave., Number 2, to expire on June 30, 2026. Motion to ratify the appointments by the town administrator of the above-listed individuals to serve as members of town boards and committees as described above.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Mr. Chairman, just a second round of annual appointments. There's still a few left that'll come up at the next meeting, but obviously I think Kyle's online if they have a question. And I think Jim, I saw him walk in at some point. Oh, there he is, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve the appointments as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you again. These are individuals that give of their time for the betterment of the community, and we really appreciate them stepping forward for these appointments. Okay, next item on the agenda, public hearings. We don't have any license transaction. We do. We have a pledge of a license of a Section 12 All-Alcoholic Beverage Restaurant License, Santa Fe Burrito Grill LLC located at 28 West Central Street, Franklin, Mass. Clerk will read the licensed transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a licensed transaction, pledge of license for Santa Fe Burrito Grill LLC, Doing Business of Santa Fe Burrito Grill, located at 28 West Central Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. Santa Fe Burrito Grill LLC, Doing Business of Santa Fe Burrito Grill, located at 28 West Central Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038, seeking approval of a pledge of license on their Section 12 Restaurant All-Alcoholic Beverages License. Motion to approve the request by Santa Fe Burrito Grill LLC, DBA Santa Fe Burrito Grill, for the pledge of license on their Section 12 Restaurant All-Alcoholic Beverages License.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a great candidate of one of those things that I think all of you agree and we agree really has nothing to do with the local licensing authority.
For sure.
This has to do, people look at pledge of license, what's that? It's really about the financial stock holdings and really the financials behind the business with the state and the corporate ownership and things of that sort. This really has no practical application to the town. I would say the reason why we get these, or at least currently under law, is to make sure before the ABCC approves the transaction that they're in compliance with all local bylaws, they've paid their taxes, they're up to code, which the business is. So you can safely approve this, and it'll go off to the ABCC tomorrow.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jones?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think this just gives me a great opportunity to say how much I love Santa Fe Burrito. We, when we have been over the years looking for ideas that would pop up downtown, it was the Friendly's prior to that, if you folks remember. And when Santa Fe come in, I cannot tell you how much the Dean students took to it, and my family took to it. Every Monday night is $5 burrito night over there, and my kids automatically say, "We know what we're doing Monday night. We're going to Santa Fe." Obviously, I approve this. They run a good business. They've always been a good neighbor. And forward to Monday night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other counselors? I certainly am in favor of this as well, but just have a quick question since we're on the subject of alcohol licenses. Is that piece of legislation getting any movement at the state level to take us out of this equation?
I don't know, but the good news for all of you is Representative Roy and Senator Roush will be here on September 3 at your next meeting, and I have a feeling this might be one of the topics.
Somebody make sure they remind me to ask him this question.
I think the whole audience.
Because we don't, we don't need to be involved in these.
Oh, I won't forget about that.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is presentation and discussion. And we have an FY '26 budget update from our town administrator. Jamie, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unfortunately.
Right. So I'm sure this will be another matter that'll be discussed in a few weeks as well. I'm just going to give a few slides that I gave to the Finance Committee on Monday. I do want to note, if folks go to our town budget page and they go to FY '26, in chronological order, all the budget materials from this budget season are laid out there. So just go to that website, go to FY '26. The entire five-year fiscal forecast presentation I gave on Monday is live. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions in the community. If people are concerned about the budget, and if they're concerned about all of the cuts that happened this year that I know all nine of you have heard of, I know I've heard every day, please take the time to look through that PowerPoint presentation, and please take the time to read through those six pages, seven pages in the memo. It outlines what the next five years look like and what the choices that will be before, before the community. But for tonight, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the council and the folks listening in, just a short budget update. So as I mentioned at every single budget meeting, probably for every year I've been here, but certainly in the last year where we've had a lot of folks attending, we've been looking at local aid, and we've been using the most recent data that we have to try to plug, to try to create the budget that the council votes on in May, or in this case, June. But as I've mentioned many times, even though the governor, House, and Senate pass a budget, it doesn't mean that those numbers can't change in conference committee or through vetoes through the governor or overrides from the legislature later on. And so unfortunately, we did lose $231,152 in local aid. And I want to be very clear about this, relative to the vote that the council took on June 3. That does not mean that we didn't get more local aid over FY '25. We received about $543,000 still in local aid. And the main piece of that is unquestionably because of the $150 per pupil for Chapter 70 that came through, that the governor proposed, the House got codified, and the Senate codified. So that stayed intact. Then people say, "Well, why did we lose local aid?" Well, there's really a couple, they trimmed the accounts, and we'll get to them in a second. But ultimately, what happened was, and you'll see it in a second on a chart I have, the sending tuition that was obligated to be paid for from the district to the charter school for a higher charter school enrollment was really the bulk of it. The other reason is unrestricted general government aid, which basically our school district gets that entire pot of money as well, was chopped by 1%. So we ended up in an aggregate. Now, they did change the numbers on the other parts of the formula, which I'll show in a second. And as you can see, I'm going to put up a chart of the five different budgets throughout this year for the state, and you'll see how the numbers switch almost in all of them. So this was approved by the Conference Committee in, I think, on June 30. It was signed by the governor. I do want to note, both the legislature and the governor did reduce the final budget that was, that they passed by almost $1 billion, either through the legislative action or through the governor's vetoes.
Would you, just quickly, just for people that may, may be listening for the first time, explain the timing of the budget process, why our vote on a budget comes in before the state votes a final budget?
Sure. So very quickly, every city or town in the Commonwealth bases their future budget for the fall, for the, for the next year, based off what the governor puts in her budget in January. Every city or town. And that comes out at the end of January every year. Then the House has their debate in April. The Senate gets their budget done by about Memorial Day. But the vast majority of cities and towns in the Commonwealth have already gone through their budget process, and they've already gone through town meetings. So most of the time, what occurs is they get a budget. And then when the final numbers come out over the summer, the legislature this year did get their budget done exactly on the date by law on June 30. They did a great job doing that, and the governor signed the budget right on time as well, on the Fourth of July. Oftentimes, as you guys know, the council and the FinCom come back in the fall, and we do what's called a reconciliation of the budget based on the final state aid numbers that come in. And usually, those are very minor tweaks. We also, may also make some other adjustments in the budget in November, October, and November traditionally, depending on what procurement's come in as, healthcare, et cetera. So there's no, for folks that this is their first budget cycle, it may seem ridiculous, and to some degree it is, that somehow every city or town passes a budget before the state budget is done. But all of this is dependent on the federal budget, which actually operates on a October 1 to September 30 budget year. And all of this is actually a federal, state, and local partnership in essence, to make sure the federal budget first, the state budget second, and then the local budget's third. All of this, by the way, is completely out of all your control. All of this is dictated by state law. Mark has a book that he doesn't have right now, but usually he's got a thick book, about five inches thick like this, that's all municipal finance. So really, our team here and the school business administrator, superintendent, we just follow state law on all of the deadlines. So that's the quickest I can do, 66 a year, 120 seconds on that. The other thing I wanted, I wouldn't normally put on here. So anyways, the legislature and the governor did reduce the state budget by almost $1 billion versus what they had proposed earlier in the year. And obviously, I hope I don't need to say this, but obviously, the actions at the federal level are having a huge impact on states. And I do give credit to the legislature where they, that, those, those were not formal cuts that were made. They just gave themselves some breathing room for several more months to see what's shaped out down at the federal level. So I'm sure at some point later on in the year, the legislature may in fact come back and address some of those issues. Number two, and it's worth pointing out, and I pointed this out the other day, there was also an outside section in the state budget that's very important to Franklin and the people that are listening and care about the budget, particularly the school budget, have got to pay very close attention to this and need to work on this and strategize on this. Outside section three of the state budget actually requires the Department of Ed, excuse me, to conduct a Chapter 70 report. Usually, that means at some point, they may be laying the groundwork to do an overhaul of the Chapter 70 formula. The last time we did this was in 2006. I was lucky enough to work in the Education Office at that time. And I can tell you that when there are unique financial situations, sometimes they're going to go back every 20 years and look at the formula to make sure it's equitable, that communities that have large enrollment, maybe get a larger slice of the pie, but communities that have had a declining enrollment, exactly like Franklin for the last 15 years, may actually start to see some of that aid decrease. to see some of that aid decrease. Now, hold harmless is there as a provision that has protected Franklin for 17 years. So, that statute that was put in place, was actually put in place for cities like Gardner and New Bedford at the time, who had huge enrollment declines. And so that statute and that provision is extremely important to the town of Franklin, 'cause you are held harmless for your significantly declining enrollment. If that statute was not there, the town of Franklin would have seen anywhere between probably 10, 8, 9, 10, 12 million worth of local aid cut from itself, from our budget over the last 17 years. So, what does this mean? It means we really need to pay attention to this. I know all of you, as I look at you, are totally tired of me talking about this, 'cause I've talked about it at every budget meeting for years, my predecessor did as well, this former school business administrator did, all former superintendents have talked about this. This could be a very significant loss. Um, and so this is something that we need to organize around, strategize around, have a conversation about, and help educate the community about how we're gonna deal with this issue, if in fact, that comes up in the next two or three years. I just spoke about federal reductions, um, and all of this comes to, uh, presenting tonight two sample models that we propose to try to, uh, balance the budget, to recognize the $231,152 less in local aid. I want to be clear, just right out of the gate, the Finance Committee on Monday unanimously endorsed Model B. But just because it's on the presentation, and I want to make sure everybody sees it, we are proposing two models, but the Finance Committee has recommended to you to approve Model B. Model A was basically a 50/50 split, the schools would take a 50% cut, the town would take a 50% cut. Um, there's a lot in this. One, we heard a lot of concern after the override, that we should do what we said we were gonna do, not restore any services, make the cuts. We did that. Um, what was on my list earlier this year, the town council approved, and cut those services at the demand of the community to cut and say, and do what we said we were gonna do. You know, I look at this, and I say to myself, Chapter 70, people want, you know, the schools to have all the money when all the money is there, but when this, when the Chapter 70 formula means a reduction in cost, um, to come in and say that the school is gonna take the full brunt of that probably isn't the right approach, especially given the fact that the school year has been firmly planned by now, and on a budget of 78 million and change was approved earlier this year, um, that would be, I think, very disruptive to the school department. But, on the other hand, if there are, if the council and the community does not want to continue to restore any of the services lost, this would have been the staff proposal to say, "Hey, we'll split the cuts 50/50 with the schools, that seems fair," so that they don't have to cut 231,000. However, um, in working with the chief and just hearing a tremendous amount of commentary, basically from almost all parties in the community, particularly around the issues of the revenue loss of the ambulance, we worked with the finance team to try to create an innovative way, um, to try to make that whole and to try to restore the ambulance, because that was, had so much revenue that was attached to it. So that's what the Model B is, right up here. So what we did was, is if you look in the, um, up on the chart, I know you guys have it down here on the screen, but all boards and committees right now, um, throughout all the budget cuts we've made in the last two years, have not seen any reductions. So, we're proposing about $21,000 in reductions to some of the boards and committees that have larger budgets than like $1,000, right? We're not gonna cut the disability commission, it was $1,000, or the cultural committee, district committee, a thousand dollars and stuff. So those, all these accounts up here have multi-thousand dollar accounts, so we're just taking a small haircut to those, um, uh, because they have not seen any reductions so far. Um, we base our budget for healthcare, for employee healthcare, based on projections, and y'all approved that. But then we go through open enrollment over the summer, and, uh, our HR director and benefits coordinator and HR department went back and recalculated the actuals based on the actual employee healthcare, and we saw $75,000 in savings that we can add, uh, take off the budget off that line-up. Now, for the nine of you that have gone through four, five, or six budgets, you know when we get to November or October, we do the same thing. We're just accelerating that up three or four months, obviously, this year, and not waiting to October to do those numbers. But Karen and Emma and Stacy always recalculate that in the fall, and oftentimes, there's a little bit of a buffer in there based on what people take for healthcare. And so we're proposing 21,000, uh, in reductions to boards and committees, and then 75,000 in savings for that, which is a $96,000 in additional revenue capacity in the budget to restore the two paramedics, right here at 90,000 roughly, for a half a year. That assumes the paramedics would come back on January 1st. Just remember, if you approve this tonight, we have to post, post a job for a month, get candidates in, go through the hiring process, the fire chief and the fire department have a committee that goes through those interviews, there's background checks, there's psychology tests, there's all sorts of other things that have to go on, on a preliminary screen. So it does take a few months to hire folks. But we basically budgeted for a half a year, and then you would add in the benefits assumption, um, basically for, um, for those, uh, for those two paramedics, on a half a year, remember? Okay, so that's for six months. And as a result, what you see here is $96,000 in, in cuts, but 114,472 in additions. If you look at the resolution, that's not shocking, that the resolution has an $18,472 difference. Because when you actually add in the local aid, or the loss in local aid, and you add in the 250,000 roughly in revenue that we expect, for anybody that's paying attention for the first time tonight, there was a half a million dollar revenue loss due to the, uh, third ambulance being displaced. So you're now assuming half of that comes back on a half a year by getting the third ambulance back, okay? And again, if you do 249 minus 231, you get the magic number of 18,472. I know there's been some confusion, and people have emailed me about this, but these numbers 100% are accurate and check out. It does take a little bit of thinking to put it all together, but basically, you're adding 18, 4, 4, 472 dollars in additional expenses, but you're also raising that 18,472 dollars in revenues from the ambulance. So ultimately, what you're doing is you're making, you're shaving a little bit of cuts in the municipal side of the budget, and you're able to restore the two paramedics, which brings in the full-time ambulance for the, for the working hours during the week. And then basically, the revenue assumption that you bring in from the ambulance offsets basically the cost for the local aid cut. So right here, you have a model that will restore the third ambulance and bring those revenues back in and keep our public safe, and you do not see any reductions or any cuts to the school department, or, for that matter, any other department. Um, as you know, all of our departments have certainly taken a fair share of the cuts over the last two years, um, but this is to me, the simplest, briefest, and easiest way to try to restore at least one service that was lost during the, um, uh, during the, uh, during the override failure, but also gaining that third ambulance back, and also ensuring that there are no other cuts to our library, our schools, our DPW, so forth and so on. Um, I'm not gonna go through in detail the last three slides, these are online, but I put up here the FY25 numbers, and I really appreciate, um, having Evan and Kerry, uh, here, where they really helped a lot down in the, uh, Budget Office on these. So you look at FY25, we put the FY26 governor's budget, FY26 House budget, FY26 Senate budget, FY26 Conference Committee budget, and the FY26 final state budget. So these are all the cherry sheet numbers, okay? Now, this is the fun news. This is the really good stuff. Look at Chapter 70. If you look over FY25, you're gonna see an increase of probably almost $800,000. You, I'm gonna say it, I hope, for the last time. You cannot do the Chapter 70 formula on just the one bit of news that everybody likes. You cannot do that, and you're gonna see a second one. So on this slide here, you see the charter school re, tuition reimbursement, and you can see across the scale here, the different numbers in all of the different branch budgets. There's nothing wrong with that. That's the way the democratic process works in terms of budget building on Beacon Hill. The numbers are very transparent, and they're right out there. And I understand it's a little concerning for some to see such different numbers, but maybe that's something that Rep. Roy and Senator Roush can talk to us about on September 3rd, you know, at the next meeting. I also highlighted on here unrestricted general government aid. This is called UGA, it's a great acronym. And you can see right across the board how the numbers change a little bit. But ultimately, in the aggregate, these originally were at 2.2%, and then they fall at about 1.2% in the final budget over last year. So then you go to the next slide, which is the assessments. So I highlighted again in yellow or orange down here at the bottom, all this other stuff is all in state law. There's a county assessment, there's mosquito control, air pollution prob, I don't even know what some of this is, MAPC assessment, I really don't. It's all set out in state statute. So in order to change any of these things, there's GATRA on here, regional transit, um, these are all the assessments that are charged against some of our local aid. And so ultimately, you're down here, this is where the real loss was, was in school choice, in charter school sending tuition. You can look over here at 6.1 million and 518,000. So essentially, you take the good news with Chapter 70, and then you have to deduct the assessments. And then you end up with the third slide, which is the aggregate. And then final FY26 budget, you actually end up with a local aid number of 27,304,000, 27 million 304,000. And I just highlighted that in red in this purple column, to do the best I can to try to separate out the numbers, so that folks, when they're looking at this at home, can follow along. So that's it, in a nutshell, through you, Mr. Chairman. The decision tonight in the legislation for action is to do a budget amendment to reconcile the local aid loss. And as I mentioned earlier, the Finance Committee recommended Model B. Um, there's about 25 more slides that were presented to the Finance Committee on Monday, and people, there's a lot of factoids, to be honest with you, uh, but also, um, this is the best fit five-year fiscal forecast that we have put out with the most accurate, definitive numbers that we've had in six years. So if people really want a really good forecast and what the next five, six years look like, people should really read that fiscal forecast, they put all the assumptions in there, you know, you can, you can read the memo and look at the slideshow and hopefully get a gauge for what, um, for what's coming up later this fall. But more importantly, next January, February, March, April, and May, when you look at the five-year fiscal forecast, that is your fiscal reality for next spring. So, uh, the decision tonight is to hopefully reconcile the budget, and again, the Finance Committee recommended Model B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, I will say, uh, I was fortunate enough to attend the Finance Committee meeting the other night, and to hear the conversation, the debate back and forth, especially from some of the newer members to the Finance Committee, was really good, so, uh, I was really pleased to see that. So, we'll open it up to questions from the council. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I, first I want to agree with you on the Finance Committee, they did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, because that's what I was looking for when we appointed those new members, I said, "Ask questions," you know? And people stepped up, and it just saved me a whole bunch of time here. So I appreciate that.
Saved you a bunch of time.
And, um, again, I'd like to thank Evan and Kerry and Karen, your team, 'cause they did a lot of numbers. Okay, to make it even shorter, the bottom line, Jamie, option B, I think, is the best, 'cause the schools stay whole, correct?
That's right.
And finally, I think, talk about what the townspeople want, they want the ambulance. We can do it. So I would push for option B. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Any other councilors? Counselor Frangello.
Yeah, thank you. Echo the, the Finance Committee comments. One question, a comment, uh, question, what's your confidence in the fire ambulance receipts? What are the ramifications if those receipts don't come true, you know? How do they get mixed in with our other receipt projections?
It's a great, it's a really good question. And the reason why it's a good question is, oftentimes, and in most, a lot of communities, they create silos with revenues, right? So if, uh, if the Board of Health brings in revenue, it kind of goes back to the Board of Health, right? If the town administrator brings in revenue, it goes to, and, and oftentimes, in a lot of communities, you have a lot more disagreement among departments, because they kind of fight over that. The good news here is, is all of our revenues, and there is a slide at the end of this, and we did do a year-end, if you didn't watch the Finance Committee, you know, please go back and watch it, 'cause we did a year-end revenue recap for FY25. So all of our money goes into one pot, and it all goes into local receipts. So if somehow one revenue projection was a little bit below projection, almost every year I've been here, there's another revenue source that was well above, that was well above what projection was. And so, in ultimate, um, you know, ultimately, at the end of the year, we need to make sure that our local receipts hit our benchmark in the aggregate. So there's no way, and if you look at history, and there are, there's like 10 slides at the end of this, should show some local receipts history, um, it's pretty hard to predict dollar for dollar.
Yeah.
Exactly how much people are gonna eat out, how many hotels are gonna be rented, you know, I, I mean, if interest rates change, maybe some of our investment income dividends are different, um, you know, motor vehicle excise tax, the pandemic, there was a weird shift in that. So really, I give Jeff and the former council 20, 25 years ago, or whatever, a lot of credit. They really made sure that it was one pot, all the fees, building permits, revenues from all of the different agencies, recreation, they all go into one place, and ultimately, that really does support a broader team effort. So if these did come in a little bit lower, um, the other revenues and local receipts would make up for it. And then I would say the same thing about, you know, some of the other departments, I know a couple of years, there may be some other projections that were a little lower, and the ambulance receipts covered for it, so, um, you know, based on the call volume, it's not going down, um, it's going up, and I think the chief, I don't want to fully speak for him, but I think we did lose about, I think about eight mutual aid calls this session, this year already, to other towns. So not only are we losing the revenue, we're actually losing the revenue of our ambulance going to another community. Now, when that ambulance comes here, we get that revenue too, so it works both ways. But I think we put ourselves in a much better position, uh, by doing this than certainly, um, any of the other decisions that have been made. Okay.
Thank you, that's helpful. And, and then, you know, just my comment, I, I just want to make sure that we don't take these cuts lightly, uh, lightly, you know, the, the, the slow erosion of our cultural and historic, uh, investments have real impacts. I mean, these are essential services to keeping Franklin a desirable place to, uh, visit and live. Um, you know, this is cutting our, uh, cultural grants, um, by 20%, you know, the types of things that support, um, our, our young DJ friends who did a great job DJing, um, went to a celebration on, on the Common, and they, they crushed it, but it's the, you know, it's those sort of events that get you in front of, uh, your neighbors, um, and for very small dollars, we can have a large impact. And so, you know, I just don't want to take lightly, you know, cutting our, uh, culture marketing, uh, budget in half, our historical museum expenses in half, um, our historical commission expenses in, in nearly half, you know, these, these are pretty large, uh, impacts on already, uh, small dollars. So, you know, I understand why, uh, we're making them, uh, but certainly, you know, would, would push the, the town and, and certainly future town leaders to continue to invest in these things and find opportunities to restore some of these investments.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo what Counselor Chandler was saying in regards to, um, option B. I watched Monday night's meeting as well, and I was very impressed, and like him, don't really have much to be concerned about, 'cause I've watched all of that. So, I agree, op, uh, option B tends to be the best option.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, yeah, I, I went to the Finance Committee, it was, it was very, very informative, so it was very good. Uh, just to maybe, uh, pinback on, on Kobe's, uh, thing a little bit, I was talking to Ryan Jettion, and the recreational committee is, we're way over already, so, from last year, you know, from this year to this year, so we're gonna, more, that, kind of, that's the revenue that I'm talking about, you know what I mean? So, I was talking, he's, he said, "Well, every month, we're higher than we, than we were last year." So, just to give you a little info.
Yeah, great.
Ryan, we're taking that to the bank.
Yeah.
Counselor Pellegrini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't tell you how pleased I am to see that the third ambulance, and we had spoken right after budget time, that I was so disappointed that we were cutting that. I mean, it's something that is so needed here in town, and having had the opportunity to use an ambulance, I think I would advocate for it even more, okay? So I, I'm pleased that it's back. My question is, why do we have to go out looking for people to fill those positions? Wouldn't we just take those people that were holding those positions back again?
There weren't any, there wasn't anybody holding those positions, there was a retirement, and then the chief retired, so the way that that worked was, nobody actually really got fully laid off, so we've got to go post that position and go recruit and hire those individuals moving forward.
So you're hiring, um...
Two.
...one position?
Two.
Well, I thought you just said one, and I was gonna say what happened, I thought we were doing two.
That's two.
No, it's two.
Restore two positions to restore the ambulance.
Two positions.
For a half year.
Okay.
And obviously, by the way, these numbers will just get plugged into the future forecast for the budget.
Okay. Well, I think the residents of Franklin will be very happy to do this. And I too agree with Model B. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Pellegrini. Yeah, it's two positions for a half a year, which would be, and Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support Option B. Obviously, we, we need to do what we can to bring back the ambulance. I, my concern is FY '27, FY '28, FY '29, like, we can't keep seesawing this, to this critical service in this department. So we make this commitment for half a year. We need to make a commitment to these people that they're going to have a job going forward. We need to make a commitment to the fire department that those positions are solid. The community needs to get behind this, not just as a knee-jerk reaction to a state reduction, but that we prioritize these positions as a community. And I know that's going to be difficult when we enter into future budget discussions this fall and into next year, because we're adding this back in. We found a, a temporary fix to Counselor Frangello's point. There, there are some, they may seem small up there, but those cuts mean a lot to those, those boards and to the people that rely on those services. And that will just continue to erode if we don't fix the structural deficit problem. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Any other counselors? I guess the only thing that I'd, I'd add is, I support Option B as well. You know, my, my thoughts about Option A, I think the school department, school administration, the school committees did a great job this year in cutting many things, the reorganization, the redistricting, all of those things. They took, you know, their budget was cut deeply because of those, or helped us because of those, those changes. So that, along with, this is logical to do it this way, to get the ambulance back. So I totally am in favor of Option B as well. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Mark, please, name and address.
Yes, thank you. Mark Minne Kelly, 31 Longfellow Drive. I also support Model B, but I do have a question. I believe we have to submit a balanced budget every year, correct, Jamie? And I think the, so the, the top lines that add up to $96,000 in cuts represent cuts out of a full-year budget? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so we're using the cuts from the full year to fund half a year's worth of two, to the two ambulance folks. So just to stay even next year, we would have to cut an additional $96,000 out of next year's budget in order to, to stay, to stay even, correct?
Well, unfortunately, I can't say that that's correct. On paper, that is. But unfortunately, when you go into next year, you're looking at it on an aggregate. So you can't just say, like, we got to cut double these, because once you get into the budget season next year, you're going to look at where the revenues and where the situation is, and you're going to make adjustments based on that. I know that you've read my memo and read, and probably watched the Finance Committee, Mark. If you read the memo, and you look at the presentation, you watch the Finance Committee, this is not your concern. The concern, if you read it, you should be scared, big time. You should be really nervous, because everything that you've come to know and love about this town is in jeopardy over the next two or three years. So, you know, I, I say that completely respectfully, Mark. From a math standpoint, you're correct. You could go in next year and say, well, these accounts...
It has to come from somewhere.
Right. It's going to come from somewhere. That's exactly the point. So he's right. That, he's absolutely right. So that 90 is really 180 next year, probably with a little bit, almost 200. And so to have this service, to Counselor Cormier-Ledger's point a minute ago, is spot on, you're going to have to find somewhere else, right, to, to cut that. And again, that's just based off the assumptions we put in that forecast. But I can tell you, those assumptions are pretty good. Those are going to be, those are pretty solid, you know, barring any, you know, major war.
I guess, and what, the only thing I'd add to that is if, if Option B gets passed by the council this evening, I think that's sending a commitment that public safety, the third ambulance, is important to at least this council. And I can't imagine that it wouldn't be going forward as well. So we will be looking elsewhere to find those dollars to continue to support that third ambulance, because it's something we heard very strong from the community. Okay. Anybody else in council chambers? Anybody out there in Zoom land? Okay, we will move on. First, we'll move on to legislation for action. First item is Resolution 25-52, FY '26 budget amendment. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-52, an appropriation for general funds to increase and reduce FY '26, fiscal year '26. Purpose: To increase or reduce the fiscal, fiscal year '26 general fund appropriations as follows. I'm going to read the department number, the department, the appropriation, and the increase or decrease. Department 123, Town Administration, expenses a reduction of $2,500. Department number 176, Appeals Board, expenses a reduction of $5,000. Department number 220, Fire, salaries in addition of $89,472. Department number 690, Historical Museum, expenses a reduction of $2,500. Department 691, Historical Commission, expenses a reduction of $1,000. 693, Arts Culture, Creative Economy, expenses a reduction of $5,000. Department 695, Cultural Council, expenses $5,000 reduction, and 910, Benefits, expenses for a reduction of $50,000, for a total of $18,472. It moved and voted by the Town Council to increase or reduce the fiscal year '26 general fund budget appropriations as indicated above, that in total amount to an increase in the operating budget of $18,472. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home and Chartered.
Move Resolution 25-52.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. I think the only thing I'd add is just to, once again, state that the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this, this model. Okay, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-52. A majority vote required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, Resolution 25-53, Acceptance of Gift to the Town of Franklin to Restore Part-Time Health and Wellness Nurse Position. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-53, Acceptance of Gift to the Town of Franklin to Restore Part-Time Health and Wellness Nurse Position, whereas the Town of Franklin has received a donation from Franklin resident John Schmidt in the amount of $26,164.00 for the purposes of restoring for fiscal year '26 only a part-time senior center nurse position at the Franklin Senior Center, which was cut as a result of staff reductions due to the failed override. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Town Council of Town of Franklin, on behalf of Town of Franklin, accepts this donation to be used for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home and Chartered.
Move Resolution 25-53.
Is there a second?
I moved it.
No second. Did you second?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Jamie, you want to...
No, just through Mr. Chairman, really quickly, this resolution was put forth as a donation that Mr. John Schmidt had made in the failed override for one year to make a grant donation to try to restore the 12-hour-week, part-time senior center LPN nurse, health and wellness nurse. And as you know, the donations are required to be accepted by the council. And so that's what's before you tonight. I would also note that I did include in the packet a letter from the Council on Aging, which is the board that works with our senior center staff on creating programming and a whole variety of other matters. They did vote at a meeting, I don't know the date, but it was a few weeks ago, they had a meeting, and the Council on Aging is recommending to the Town Council by a six-to-one vote to not accept the donation. And they list in here a series of reasons why. And so the letter's there for anybody in the public or anybody to read. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselors, Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. It's, it's difficult to have a discussion in these challenging financial times and the budget that we're facing, to be debating taking a gift from somebody, right? A private citizen steps up and writes a check for $26,000 for, to save someone he cares about, save a position that he feels is critical. But what worries me is the precedent that gets set with this position being saved by a private donation if we were to approve it. What about the other positions in town? What about if somebody decides, well, I want to pay to restore a police officer that was let go? Have we then indebted to that person? Seems like it opens up some ethical challenges. What happens if the person gets fired? Do we then have to give the donor a refund? What happens if the person quits? Like, there's challenges that gifts like this raise to me on ethical standards, but also on just being practical. In the nonprofit world, I'll, I'll share some light. Positions get funded sometimes this way through endowment gifts, right? People will say, well, you know what, I want to preserve this position over here. I don't want it to ever impact the operating budget. So we're going to raise $1 million, and $50,000 that comes out of that endowment interest every year will help pay for that position, right? That's how the nonprofit world works. It's not how municipal government works. Right? So if Mr. Schmidt had, and I understand from talking to staff, that there was a discussion about whether he would allow this to be unrestricted and used by the Council on Aging for other purposes, and he said no. So that's what's before us. We have a gift that has restrictions on it that can only be used, the donor intent is for a particular person to be brought back, a particular position to be restored. And it also raises the concern about, well, what happens next year? We just talked, we just talked about the challenges we're going to have before us for the fire positions. Now we have, now we're adding back in another job. Are we going to go to Mr. Schmidt every year and say, well, we need you to come up with this money again? Or, by the way, it's not a half a year anymore, it's a full year? Like, it just opens up an awful lot of challenges, in my opinion. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, before things like this, we talk about this, I always like write stuff down. So I've been writing things multiple days in a row, trying to get to the point of, you know, I'm trying to describe to everyone how I think and what I've been thinking about. And, you know, these kind of discussions hurt, right? So as Counselor Cormier-Ledger said, it's like, this is really difficult for us, because it has some repercussions, but it's like, we're, we need money, right? So it hurts my stomach, because, you know, on one hand, there's this easy way, this decision that's really easy to make, yeah, let's just take the money. But on the other side, on the other hand, there's this, there's an answer that I know is right for the community and the future. So imagine, if you will, a sponge getting twisted out. Like, that's how I feel when we have to have discussions like this. And my heart hurts a lot, because I believe in the community, right? I believe we all pitch in together to make sure that people have what they need. They will be in a much better place. But this discussion has actually divided the community already quite a bit. And my head hurts a lot, because this really seems short-sighted to me. If you have read the town administrator's budget forecast for the next five years, it's, it's as if we are trying to fix a leak on a ship with a piece of tape, and the leak is at the waterline, when no one's looking at the fact that the keel is missing. That's what it feels like to me. I truly appreciate the generosity of this individual, but I really am worried that this donation will set a very bad precedent, as Counselor Cormier-Ledger has said. Even if it was anonymous, anyone who make, who is making this type of donation knows whose employment they just bought and could possibly demand special treatment. Will someone buy, next, buy a patrol officer, as Counselor Cormier-Ledger said, and expect leniency or an ability to target others? Or how about a firefighter who can only drive an ambulance to their house? Or a communications coordinator who will only be asked to post certain items? These things might sound ridiculous, but this is the direction that we are headed. It also leads to undue stress on the employee. This is a symptom of what is not working in American society. I believe that when you live in a community, everyone pitches in money together, our property taxes, to make life better for all. If we pay a small percentage more, everyone gets more. And what do we get when we get more? We get things like people are complaining about now, that the trash is getting picked up in the parks. Like, the trash will get picked up in the parks. The town-owned grass areas will get mowed. There'll be SROs in our schools, open space purchased, roads and sidewalks taken care of, maintained, cloud and, with ice melt on it in the winter, historic preservation of amazing buildings. If you've read the memo, I hope you do, the forecast, we can keep our library open, right? We can keep the senior center open. This is what we're talking about. These are the things we should be talking about. We can have a town hall where residents can get things done. The needs of the community are met when we all pitch in together. This trend of not wanting to pay a little more for everyone, but willing to spend a lot more money on what that only one individual wants, is what is going to lead us into an inequitable community. Sure, I totally understand that there are things I don't want my taxes spent on, or your tax, you don't want things. But if we get to pick and choose some things, we'll go unfunded. So I still pay? Why? Because I believe in community. I believe in democracy. I believe in taking care of everyone. I believe that the efficiency of scale with a pooled pot is the way to go. I think I'm begging my colleagues on the council to think about this very carefully and not go down the privatization route. I will be voting no on this, and I'm trying to, like, get rid of most of the other stuff I wrote. And I believe very strongly that we all need to sort of think about what we, what we're doing. How are we acting with each other? And I think that we need to remember that our actions have effects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Frangello, did you have your hands up?
I had my hands up before, I was more going to ask for an explanation like that. I think I've also been struggling with it, but had it come to the same level of, you know, conclusions that you had.
Passion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, to me, it was confusing, right? Like, I, I think that there was a lot of, we have an opportunity to, for no extra cost, fund a service that was already being provided for nine additional months. And they know that that's not in the budget. They know that it's not tied to, you know, anything that we can sustainably fund in, in the future until we get more funds. We know that's just, you know, a nine-month gap. And we know that, like, you know, it's being serviced by one individual, and that's not a sustainable way to, like, fund our budget. And, you know, if someone donated some service, you know, some opportunity to... And we know that, like, you know, it's being serviced by one individual, and that's not a sustainable way to, like, fund our budget. And, you know, if someone donated some service, you know, some opportunity to, you know, something of value to the town, can we name that for what it is, but still accept, you know, the additional value for the town, however temporarily and however small? So, you know, and I guess I was looking for, you know, that level of explanation for, okay, if, you know, the precedent of one person funding something expecting, you know, having some, you know, different power dynamic, I hear that. You know, that to me is the most compelling, but, you know, it's a position that already existed, and we can, we can just monitor that and make sure that they're providing equal treatment. I did have to question about, like, what happens if we did accept this and the individual does quit halfway, or we can't hire them immediately, or, you know, what happens when funds don't fully match up? Does it go into the full town?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so a gift of this sort, well, any gift, right? When it has a specific attachment, somebody can send in a donation for $1,000 for the, to buy an AED, right? Then legally, you can only do that. So Mr. Schmidt's donation was specifically for the Health and Wellness Nurse. So if there was some situation where down the road, you know, due to some unforeseen circumstance, you know, it's more likely the case where there was an illness, or a family matter, or something, you know, came and changed of life, unfortunately, you cannot use that fund, you cannot use those funds for any other purpose. And so it just sits there. And then we could rehire somebody else, but then you're hiring somebody maybe on one, two, three, four, five months, you know, depending on those situations. So it sits there in an account, and that's all you can use it for.
My only other thought, if I have a little more time, was, okay, it seems like the cleanest way, you know, we do allow volunteers to supplement town services when town services fall short. I don't think it's the proper way to run a town. I think we should encourage and, you know, truly evaluate our ability to provide the services that the town enjoys. But we know that we do this, right? We have a food pantry that supplements our, some of our needs. We have a safe coalition that supplements some of our needs, you know. Again, I don't think we should lean so heavily on the, on the nonprofit. But this seems like one of those, like, if we were to do it, the cleaner way to do it, maybe the, you know, the more easy to understand way to do it is, you know, create a nonprofit body that volunteers, that then volunteers the services, and we don't get in the business of paying for however that service is provided, but we accept the volunteer service however long. That, to me, was where I landed, as sort of the cleaner way to allow for what I think exists in a whole bunch of different ways, which is the supplementing of our town services through private donation.
I mean, through you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I mean, you would, I mean, we have that with the Friends of the Franklin Elders, and, you know, that could, that could be another You know, we'd have to work with them to see what, you know, how they would manage that. And once you donate to them, I think, in truth, they're going to honor what that donation was for, but once you give it to some other group, then they can kind of decide on their own what to do.
Yeah.
Or if there was somebody that left, or if there was, you know, something happened.
But essentially, we wouldn't be in the business of that. We can evaluate the acceptance or non-acceptance of a, of a service.
No, you, no, you're right. You wouldn't. And I think this is what all of you have worked so hard to avoid for many years. As many of you know, I was the senior center director for a little while around the pandemic there, when Karen Als retired. And Counselor Hamblin's quote about masking tape was absolutely the way the senior center was funded for a long time. It was an hour here, dollar there, grant here, you know, donation here. It was triaged that way. And, you know, we've definitely done an exponentially better job capturing the revenue. We now pay for about 35% of the entire budget through revenues that come in. That'll slowly tick up a little bit over the years, but you may be right. I don't know whether it's cleaner, I don't really want to comment on that, but, you know, there isn't, there might have been another route.
Yeah, I'll just wrap up by, you know, thanking everyone involved. I mean, certainly, a huge generosity even in idea from Mr. Schmidt, and, you know, all, I think, very well-intentioned, really appreciate the care that everyone in the Council on Aging took to their decision, including the one dissenting vote, who I thought was very well-reasoned and articulated his reasoning well, and appreciate everyone who's, who's put up, these aren't easy decisions.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, no, for many of the reasons already given. Ted, you coined it the best, so I'm certainly not going to repeat what you said. But I do want to make a couple of quick points while I, while we're on the subject. Mr. Chairman, through you, to Jamie or to Mark, can you recall any time in our history that we've ever had this across our plate? A, it just, it doesn't sit well with me for, for the many reasons that have already been mentioned, but can you recall anything in our history? I don't ever once see something like this come across my desk in the past.
No. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, so, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, in my 10 years, nothing to this level.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Number two, I want to make clear on a slight comment I made on Monday on a hypothetical, just with the questions of the Finance Committee, the school committee actually has a policy, as most school districts do because of master of law, they don't accept any private donations to supplement.
Right.
Staff. Number three, to Counselor Cormier-Ledger's point earlier, even if your favorite police officer, or your favorite firefighter, or your favorite teacher got reduced because of budget cuts, there's a collective bargaining agreement. In this case, that's not necessarily the case. But there are a lot of other policies and agreements and contracts and laws, and that's why you don't see this very much. Communities like Wellesley, and I'm not being, I'm being very serious, communities that have more affluence than, you know, like, people go and try to offer $200,000 gifts to buy playground, to build playgrounds, or they try to do naming rights. But to your point, Counselor Jones, nothing like this. I will make one small note, that when the senior center, some 10 years ago, when Karen Als was here, there was a strategy on a fundraising campaign to make donations to Fofi to hire the first-ever, like, line cook, okay? And maybe some other positions that were down at the senior center. Also, those were unsustainable ways to maintain those services, to everybody's points. Those were completely unsustainable ways to do this. And so there were other small examples, but those were very different. Those were a strategic effort between Ms. Als and Fofi to go out and say, could we raise the $10,000, whatever it was, $10,000 to bring on the line cook? Not from a budget cut and then any type of compensation like this. But I've been here 10 years, and I can only speak for the last 10 years.
Not done. Thank you, Jamie.
Didn't think you were.
Nope. That was, that was enlightening. And again, just having been through many budget cycles myself, the one thing that also rubs me a little bit about this is, and we've never really, to Jamie what was alluding to, we don't really get into the habit of taking one-time, non-recurring funds to fund positions within the town. It's never, it's never, it's because you can't. It's the, it's the discussions we've had multiple times, it's like, okay, we have to fund this next year, and we have to follow, we have to fund it the following year, et cetera, et cetera. I personally think that the part-time senior center nurse position is a viable position that we should keep. I don't think this is the correct way to fund it. I would like to make a suggestion to take what is a recurring budget line item, the archivist, from the historical side of things, and maybe move that funding and do away with the archivist and keep the part-time senior center nurse.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, there's, certainly, that's not the question that you're debating right now.
I understand that.
If that's, if that's a priority of the council, we could do that. I just want to make note that you're, you'd really, I'd have to do the numbers, but those numbers don't even come close to equalling out. So you would probably take one position down to three-quarters time, say, hypothetically, instead of full-time, to try to supplant, you know, that, for, for the LPN.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Delarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I too have struggled with this because I think everyone's first reaction is, oh, yeah, let's just take it. And, you know, I mean, obviously, if we get a nurse down the senior center in any way, I would definitely support that. I do kind of agree with Counselor Frangello about if you could do it a private way, you know what I mean? And, you know, if you could do something like that. But then it comes back to Counselor Cormier-Ledger's point as, what if a bunch of parents got together and funded the SROs in the school department? And then they didn't like what they were doing, and, because they paid for them, so it's kind of, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of, you know, I'm thinking, you know, 20 parents get together, they, they fund it, but then he does something wrong to their student, to their child, and then all, all hell breaks loose, let's face it. And that's what, that's what concerns me, and that's what, I kind of would change my mind on that.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Counselor Plegory.
I think I'm going to stand by myself on this, so, because I think this is great. I really do. I think it's a position that we will be able to take back, whether it's for a short time or what. They're using the word precedent, and I've used that many times when I'm saying things. This may be a good precedent. There may be people out there that are willing to step up to help. What if someone won the lottery? And they came and they said they wanted to pay for the, a new police station? Would we say no to them? No, we wouldn't. I would hope we wouldn't say no to that. But I mean, there are people out there that have the means and might want to help out with certain things. And I'm really surprised that none of you looked at it that way. I think of the, the schools, and they have the PCCs, and they may not pay for a position, I'm not sure about that, but they pay for many things. And, and we accept, and we don't, the school accepts that. I think that this is something good. I think that Mr. Schmidt has, has, has been very generous in doing this, and for it to last for just so long. And if there are questions of what can be done, if something happened with the position in there, we certainly have ways of making out a resolution in that, so that we'd have to follow if something was to happen. I think that we don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, that saying, and it's so true. And I wish that some of you would think twice about it now before we vote, and instead of all of this, just say thank you to Mr. Schmidt, and let's take back a part-time, 12-hour-a-week nurse at the senior center. I think it's very important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegory. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to agree with you a little bit, Counselor Plegory. Look, this job at $26,000 is about one of the lowest, lowest payment that we pay. It's very cheap to, if, if we give this, if we take this money, I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate about this, because this is one of those jobs that's just going to help the seniors. I mean, we've kind of hurt these townspeople. We cut, we stuck to what we were going to say. We cut all that stuff from the vote no override. This is like the shortest money to restore something that's so important to the people down there. I mean, I'm not going to bring up if when people fall or anything, there'll be nobody there. I just, I think we need this position for the $26,000. I understand a different precedence, but I hope we can change, me and Counselor Plegory can change a couple of your minds, because I think it really is important to the people down there. It really is. And I know this is not what we're talking about tonight, Jamie, but couldn't you actually fund this for half a year and next year with, Amy's leaving October 1st, with those funds from her salary? Couldn't we just put it right there and fund it for the next 15 months? You can't?
Well, I mean, it's a possibility. There's some, there's some legal problems with some of this stuff, but I think, I would just say, I, you know, I agree with everybody's comments. You know, I'm not taking a position on this because I have to manage the senior center. I hired Trish. When Jeff was here, we were here. I think we've all been pleased to see how much progress has made at the senior center. Again, I just applaud, read my memo. If you don't like this discussion, beware of what's coming up, get engaged. I would say that, you know, down the line, there might be an opportunity to do something like that. But I think, to me, and just seeing and hearing, and I know all of you have too, over the last, you know, eight or nine weeks since the override failure, I wish some of the effort that went into all of this went into the override. Because we forget, it was a 93-vote difference. It was 1% of the vote. If a lot of the effort that's gone into rallying people and, and Council on Aging letters and discussions and all this stuff, if all of this energy had gone into June 4th, we may not be sitting here, and then we'd have structurally the revenue for this position in perpetuity. Counselor Chandler, I couldn't agree with you more on the importance, and I do want to mention one more thing. We do have an RN nurse that's down there. There is a full-time nurse, so it's not as if the entire nursing service is gone. But I think that this is, this discussion is really important because I think it's a broader symptom of what this community is struggling to realize. Mr. Schmidt felt very passionately about this, and he's putting his money where his mouth is. On the same end, I have heard pain, we've heard from the teachers with the SROs, we've heard from children, we've heard from kids about the therapy dogs, we've heard from people about the firefighters, we've heard from our schools and our parents about another round of devastating cuts, we've heard from librarian, we've heard from everybody about one of the services that got lost in that override. And, and it seems like people really focus on what they care about, and that's okay. But one thing that they all have in common, the one thing they all have in common, which should be bringing this community together, is everybody lost something that they care about, everybody lost something that they value, and everybody lost something that they really loved and they now miss. So I think as we move forward, I think the question for the community is, how do we bridge all of these emotions and feelings so that we don't have this situation? Mr. Schmidt could have paid $300 in property taxes, which is equivalent to 84 years in this one donation. And while he's generous with this, and I know, we all know John very, very well, I know we all know him extraordinarily well, and he's down at the senior center every day, and we know that his heart and soul is down there, and he cares about the staff very much, and it is very hard to look to gift horse in the mouth. On the same end, I think this is also a very good example of something that I hope the community can use as contextual evidence that, you know, the unity was not there where everybody realized that they were going to lose something that they really cared about. And so, to your original question, Mr. Chandler, you know, you know, down the road, we may be able to do something like that, but right now, I can't say that that's something we can do because of the contractual obligation to hire and fund the deputy town administrator. And, you know, the marketplace for, for a deputy is obviously very challenging these days, and, you know, obviously salaries aren't getting cheaper, so, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Right. I just to finish up. I meant, because if we didn't hire the deputy until January 1st, we'd have that. That's just where I was coming from. And, and one last question about you. You mentioned the nurse down there. Now, that nurse is responsible to go on the road too, so she's not always at the senior center? And this one would be?
She's based out of the senior center. She's there most of her time. She does do other projects and stuff. She does, half of that, half of that position is from grant funding through the state. And so, you know, I, I think we all agree that we could use the additional LPN.
Mm-hmm. I do.
Question is, is, how do we do it? Is this the right way to do it? You could post, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different options, but, you know, just leave it there.
Good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Sheridan.
I guess, like, my question would be through you. Getting a donation for a new police station, that's, that'd be different, right?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be different.
Yeah. And it'd be just different, getting a one-time donation, right?
Right.
A position, okay.
Right. And just, and I think the difference is, there is a difference. Counselor Plegory is correct. The schools do get a lot of donations for a variety of things, for enrichment programs and a whole bunch, bunch of things. But they don't accept donations for personnel, for personnel. So, you know, and, and I understand why. If somebody came in and said, we want to restore the SROs, you can't just do that. Like, there's a collective bargaining agreement, we have to follow those dynamics. You can't, you can't just do that. You know, it would take some coordination and some, you know, some, it would take some coordination to do this thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sheridan.
Mr. Chairman, just one more question.
Sure.
The young lady that had her hand up said that this happened before. I think we would.
She'll get an opportunity. I'll go to them, and I'll give the audience a chance.
No, no, no. Anybody that wants to speak, I'll give them the, the opportunity. Again, I agree with what every, all of my fellow counselors said. I think we all would love to say, yep, here we go, take it, let's do it. But there, there are extenuating circumstances that come with this. And to many counselors' concerns, the precedent that it's setting, and just to And just to Jamie's point, uh, because I, I did some, a little bit of homework on this, and the school committee actually, or the school, the school committee and school administration actually have a policy. And the policy actually states, "The donated fund shall not supplement the operational budget voted by the school committee." This would include payment of salaries, instructional stipends, operating, cost of buildings, and curriculum programs. So they've had an issue, or they've had issues, uh, that forced them to get a policy into place to deal with that. I think that's where we should go. Uh, to get put, get a policy, have some good discussion about this, and get a policy in place that works, and that allows for a way to do this. And I applaud, I don't know whether it's Counselor Frangello, Counselor Jones, somebody who talked about, is there a way to do it through a volunteer basis? I'd love to see that happen. And I think with a little bit of work, maybe it can. But as it's presented tonight, I have a problem voting, uh, in favor of it for just those reasons. Not that I don't want the LPN there, I do. And, but I think there's a way we could do it. Uh, you know, and maybe with John's help. Uh, and again, I can't thank, John and I were classmates in school. Uh, I know him very well, and, uh, very much appreciate the donation, excuse me, that he's put forward. So, I think you've heard from every one of us. I'll go to the audience. Is there anyone, please, come forward? Just name and address, please.
Bob Goffman, Fourko Haslett Way. Um, I usually speak from, sorry, usually speak from that mic. I'm going to be close to the door tonight. As been mentioned, there was a six-to-one vote. I'm the one to center. I'm the associate Jackson of the COA, okay? I have submit, I, I distributed the, um, COA letter to a number of people, and I just want to make one thing clear before I start. By the way, I have short notes. Going to talk a little longer because of some of the comments made here, though. And I was surprised that some of the people accused the six members who, who drafted the letter of obfuscating the, uh, the facts. In other words, intentionally trying to skew or confuse the situation. Um, I know all the members well, that is absolutely, it, it didn't happen. I just want that, so as far as I'm concerned, it's off the table. As written, some of these, you know, the four points are open to interpretation. A couple of them do conflate. Now, conflate just means combining two or more ideas, and we're all guilty of it. I know I, you know, I do a brain dump, or have in the past when I still had a full brain, but, um, all of a sudden, you realize, wait a minute, I'm, I'm not only confusing the people I'm going to talk to, I'm confusing myself. What I'm going to address tonight is not a rebuttal, it's clarification. We're going to start out with paragraph one, which the letter, um, defines as equity and fairness, and it alludes to the possibility of an anonymous, I like the term earmarked rather than restricted, earmarked donation that could be used to influence or corrupt the town council's decision-making process. I make no comment on that. But that's basically what it's alluding to. What we're addressing here tonight is, as we've already talked about, is an earmarked donation from John Schmidt, totally transparent, a lifelong citizen of the town, family history goes, and the town goes back a hundred years. And what he is trying to do is to assist the town in reinstating the position at no cost to the taxpayer. Unbelievable kiss, keep it simple, stupid. That's all he's trying to do. It should also be noted, and I know the town council's all aware of this, the public may not be, but your purview is to address the donation. If you vote to accept the donation, it does not automatically reinstate the position. That falls to the administration. That is an HR function. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're, you're correct, but if it's earmarked for a specific thing...
Right. But, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, because it, it addresses one of the comments the council made. All I'm asking is that you let the process work. Don't shoot the horse out of the, out of the chute. This is just the tip of the iceberg. This goes well beyond just the senior center. We have four basic sources of revenue: taxes, grants, FOFI, and private donations. If I'm missing any, let me know. If we set a precedent here that we don't accept this donation, there's a lot of money sitting out there. I'm not going to say that there's donors sitting out there. Let me rephrase that. There are people who are willing to go to their churches and their fraternal organizations and their private clubs, I belong to the Rotten Gun Club, and suggest to them that they donate money. How much is out there? I don't know. And then you've got all the retailers in town, and you've got the companies in Forge Park. There's a lot of money sitting out there. We're not there yet, but the town is eventually going to be facing an existential crisis. We have to do things differently. We have to think outside the box. We have to get away from, it's the Franklin way. It's the way we've always done it. There's something called corporate Darwinism. Adapt, assimilate, evolve, or die. It's time we do things differently. We all, and I, I say, when I say "we" and "us," I'm always talking collectively, we have to all become change agents. I did it my whole professional career. So we do have to step back and take what I call the thousand-foot view. Look at this from, from a higher level. Again, all I'm asking is that you consider it from that perspective. I also want to mention, and it's already been brought up, I have asked this of Jamie and, and a number of other people, I have not been able to determine what the difference is between a private donation from an individual or a family versus FOFI, who is defined on the town website as a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization. Show me in writing where there's, there's a difference. See, I'm big on documentation. I'm big on the written word. I, I got my black belt in, in six-sigmen and lean manufacturing from Motorola University forty years ago. I'm a certified automotive and aerospace auditor. You live and die by procedures and what's written. I think there's a lot of procedures that are, are yet to be developed. The, um, so that's really it for question one, statement one. Two is policy consistency. You've already talked about the school board. The school board is not the town council. Fine, they've got a policy about not accepting donations for salaries. Where's it written? You have, you have, we have a policy for that? Why do we have to, you know, follow them? The tail end of the letter, it talks about, um, uh, danger of, of setting a new precedent. You all received an email from Steve Sherlock over the weekend with town zone documentation. FOFI funded the wellness nurse for five years, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. The grill cook from two thousand ten threw the shutdown till two thousand twenty-one. That's twelve years. That's not precedent? Regarding the, um, statement that was made about the public health nurse, is everybody aware of what she does when she's out of the building? She does what Trish does, I'm sorry, she does what the wellness nurse does, except for the people who can't get out of their house. Do you realize that we had the two of them together, the synergies, the two of them created? Are you familiar with synergy? The whole is greater than the sum of the parts. We've now lost half of that team. All it takes is one health crisis out in the field, and the public nurse isn't available to fulfill the, uh, the wellness nurse position. So there's a risk there. Number three, operational integrity. F, uh, senior center, uh, staffing decisions most certainly fall under the purview of its management. And again, whereas the question on the donation falls to you good people. So nobody's questioning the decision that the center had to make. I know you're not going to be happy with business decision, I would have made the same decision. You know, I grew up under, you know, Jack, uh, Jack Welch, kill the people, leave the building standing. Every year, I had to eliminate the bottom ten percent of my workforce. That was three hundred people. Ten percent, that's a lot of people. So I know how ugly it can get. Lastly is respect for the voter decision. Unless there was a ballot out there that I didn't see, the ballot question was on the There's nothing about not accepting donations. So this is another one where it kind of got conflated. It, 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 say, were there two ballots that I'm not aware of? Okay, now, let's sum it all up. As I mentioned earlier, we've got the four basic sources of income. We know what's going on with the taxes. FOFI is always going to be there. If we start closing non-critical functions, which is the senior center, the library, the historical museum, who knows what else, you think we're still going to qualify for as many grants as we have? Grants don't always go to the towns that are the neediest. They often go to towns like Franklin, that they know they're going to get the biggest bang for their buck. They weren't going to give us ninety thousand dollars or whatever it was for the bus if we were running a Schlock House organization. So that's at risk. That is definitely at risk. The fourth option again is donations, and we need to keep an open mind. If you pass it tonight, you've done your job, that doesn't reinstate the position. As I said again, it then gets passed on to administration. Let the process work. This is going to be a learning curve for all of us. Our goals are all the same, to make this town as successful as possible, and to support the citizens in every way that we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, is there anyone else, please?
Faith Flaherty Glenn Drive, Franklin. I am the secretary of the COA, and we did vote the proposal down, respect the vote, because of the reasons that many of you, the concerns that many of you said, plus the precedent that was followed. You're not establishing a precedent. I'll give you a history lesson. Two thousand two, the town had a community center. In the community center was housed Human Services Department. We had a Director of Human Services. We had a Youth Service Director and a Recreation Department in the COA. Because of budget cuts, we lost the Director of Human Services. COA completely separated itself and went to the senior center. So in there, in the community center was housed the Yu, human, the Youth Service Director and Recreation. The Youth Service was RIF, Reduction of Force. So the director lost his job. They had a component that was like FOFI, called the Youth Services. If you remember Santa's train ride, that was one of their fundraising things. They also ran the concession stand in Forge Park Train Station. They were there selling things. And Beaver Pond Concession Stand, they raised funds. They offered to pay Jay, the Director of Human Services, no, I mean, the Director of Youth Services, salary. The town said no, for the reasons that you said here. Right, Mark?
Thank you.
So, we were following precedent. You're not starting one. Thank you.
Please.
I'm going to go real quick.
Okay.
I was never going to talk. I'm going to, because I feel it's important. I'm Lori Chaffee, uh, Five MacArthur Road. I have seen the nurse in action. My mom was at the senior center for a few years before she passed away, and I am, happen to be friends with her. But regardless of that, I have never seen, it is so important to these elderly people, this position. Not only does she take blood pressures and all, you know, the usual stuff, but I have, she helps them with things that is so important. Things like, um, she teaches a balance class, balance, you know, so people don't fall, um, how to, you know, she teaches bereavement classes, she teaches caretaker, she has caretaker support group for people who caretake with her, you know, their elderly husband or whatever. So she teaches classes that are so important to the, to the elderly people in this town. So if you can't do it for this, this position should never have been cut in the first place, to be very honest. These elderly people of our community need this position. She, I've watched her help them, when, when, you know, when you have to go through all the red tape of trying to, you know, do insurance, or, or try and get one, you know, your, your husband who's elderly, who's with the, you know, into a, a home, I mean, one of those, um, rehab places, she can help them with everything. She understands it all, she, it's, it's, it's an important position. So if you don't vote tonight, which I think you should, but if you don't for this, for this, uh, donation, you should go back and try and reinstate this position. Absolutely. Cut something else, it's important to the elderly people of this community.
Thank you. Is there, please? Just name and address, please.
Lynn O'Brien, sixteen Holmes F. I am the chair of Counseling on Aging, and I can tell you, this was a gut-wrenching decision for all of us. None of us wanted to vote the way we've, we did. We did it for all the reasons that were stated. Trish was also a friend of most of the members, and it's just been very sad. But I have to say that if you do let one person pay for a salary, you're opening up a bad can of worms for the future. Our nurse is very precious. Yeah, I've been... I've been on the Council on Aging for somewhere around 15 years. I've watched a lot of change. And we used to have the visiting nurses come in and do blood pressure clinics, diabetic clinics, teaching for all kinds of things. I believe that we should never have cut this position. I have also been a home care nurse for 30 years. I know what it's like for these elderly people that need these services. They're desperate. And it's really a major concern that we are even thinking of cutting anything from the senior center with all the services we provide. I just believe that you do need to come up with that salary in a different way. That should be your biggest priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeanie Talland. I live at 148 Highwood Drive. I apologize, I left my cane, it was under the chair.
Somebody will get it.
No, 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 no. Don't need it to stand here, just to walk. I'm a carpetbagger. I have only lived in town for about 40 years. I was not born here. Currently, I've been involved with Franklin, Friends of Franklin Elders for, I don't know, about four or five years now. And the senior center for much longer. And for my sins, in May, I was voted the chairman of the board of Fofi. Okay. Jamie addressed the way we were paying for the positions in the past. So I don't need to do that again. There was a plan in place. There is no plan for now, for what we will do next year or the year after. We're not working towards the town picking it up. I'm sort of scattered here, so put up with me. There was comment that Trish is in the building and Alicia is not. But Trish only works part-time. And about a year and a half ago, I fought the rug and the rug won. And you should have seen my face because I had a fall. There were no nurses in the building. It was not Trish's day to be there. So we dealt with the EMTs, thankfully. And I recovered. The other piece is that Fofi is responsible for fundraising. And we have done mostly internal over the last few years that I've been involved. But about three years ago, we started the Winter Wonderland, which has become one of our major events. And we are looking into doing a second major event during the course of the year. I think one thing that's important to recognize is that this is a very difficult time to be doing fundraising. Everybody's looking for money. Fortunately, some places are much better than we are, and we're learning. We do not have the same kind of community that the schools, the library, all, other, the food pantry all have. They serve a much broader community. Most of our fundraising has been more internal. We do raffles, things like, we have been doing raffles and things like that. So please feel free to come in and pick up a ticket for the next raffle, which is a number of Patriots items, which will be drawn the Thursday before their opener. But that's something that we're working on and trying to build on as well. Another thing that has been mentioned is to let the process work. Fofi made a recommendation to the Council on Aging to not accept this money. And I'm sorry, Trish, I don't want to hurt you. I love you, and you've been really helpful to me. But it just did not seem to be the right thing to do. So we made that recommendation to Fofi, to the council, which went on. We had an election for an override. It failed by what, less than 100 votes? However, most of the town voted no, because they didn't even bother to go to vote. So if you look at the number of potential voters in town, they were very clear. They did not want the override and they wanted changes made. So the process has been working out. And a small group has seemed to be wanting to fight that. The Council on Aging's, our vote, our recommendation was pretty unanimous. There were people who wanted to keep Trish. We all wanted to keep Trish. The council voted. One person voted against it. That's not much of a majority. And so let the process play out. And I'm a little disappointed. I read the letter in the Observer. And I listened to Steve's interview. I do not know that anybody, I know nobody from Fofi was approached to offer our thoughts. I don't know if Sarah or anybody in the Council of Aging was. But I haven't heard that they were. And that's a little disappointing that it was pretty one-sided. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have. Okay.
I really don't have a horse in this game yet. But it seems to me like.
We can see.
People feel really strongly about this nurse and this position. And we have all of these, what I think are really good rules about not funding salary positions based on one-time funds. So I propose that you table the vote. You write some procedures about accepting donations because God knows we do need the money. And maybe there's a way to do this another way.
Please.
It's hard to follow all these people. Kim Mu Chel, Fork Barwood Road, I think. Been there for 35 years, but sometimes I get kind of confused. Always been a town wannabe. Never will be a townie because I wasn't born here. I used to tease someone on the Council of Aging because she said that she came to Franklin when she was nine days old. And I looked at her and I said, "You're not a townie." Because she wasn't born here. But I'm also on the Council of Aging. And I want to say that it was extremely difficult and heart-wrenching for us to make our recommendation, which you all know. I think in terms of Fofi in the past, funding a couple of positions, that often happens with grant writing. And I'm really involved with Chinostix, which actually does a lot of grants in the area. And we gave the town of Franklin $10,000 for the migrant hotel. We've done other grants in this area. But oftentimes, people will fundraise for a new position so that they can prove that it's worth and then have the town pick it up. I don't think most fundraising things fund a position that has been eliminated by a position. And I'm really, you know, I really wish that all the people who didn't vote actually went out to vote. Because I don't think we would actually be in this position. But I also feel that the people have spoken. You guys did your job. And I feel for Sarah. I feel for all of us. I feel for the fracture that's within the Council of Aging now. I feel for all of you. But I think you need to do what's right, and this is not the right way. And maybe there's a different way of doing it.
Exactly.
That is a way.
I think we all agree. Thank you. Okay. I think we've had a very healthy discussion. Last one. Last one in council chambers, how's that?
Phyllis Malcolm, August Avenue. I am the Vice Chairman of the Council of Aging. And I did not, I do not approve of accepting this donation because we do have a full-time, like Jamie said, there is a full-time nurse down there five days a week. And where Trish is only there, the nurse there is only there two days a week. And sometimes she's out of the building. And that's my position. But I am also, I am a townie.
Yes, we know. Okay. Is there anybody out in Zoom land? I don't see, I don't see anybody. Okay, seeing no further discussion. The, let's see. The vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-53. And again, a majority votes required. Sure. Roll call vote. Clerk will call the roll.
Quamie Elijah.
No.
Charity.
No.
Jenna.
Yes.
Angelo.
No.
Pellegrini.
Yes.
Hamlin.
No.
Jones, no. Delarco.
No.
Ursula.
No.
Two yes and seven no, sir.
Okay. Motion fails. But I would like to, Jamie, I would like to direct you to look at this position and look at a way that maybe talking with John or other ways to deal with this issue. And at the same time, I'd like to see us have a full-scale discussion on putting a policy together so we're not put in this position again.
Bingo.
Because it's not fair.
It's not fair to all of us.
It's not fair. So, Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I'll get on that tomorrow. One, we'll work on the policy. And two, you know, again, I know I said it already, but your directive, I will work with the senior center director, John Schmidt, maybe even the COA. You know. Unfortunately, sometimes you go through these situations with failed overrides or failed policies. And a lot of the feedback we hear from people, and people, when they lose something like this, this is the type of dialogue that needs to occur in the future. So I will work with them. I will certainly work with the LPN and the rest of the staff to see if there's anything that we can do over the next couple of months to come back to the council with an alternative proposal.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 25-54. Approval of the installation of a sign on public property in recognition of Nello P. Bassagnani. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-54. Approval of installation of a sign on a public property in recognition of Nello P. Bassagnani. Whereas, Nello P. Bassagnani was a lifelong resident of Franklin who volunteered countless hours over many years for myriad of Franklin youth programs. And whereas in recognition of his tireless efforts in serving Franklin's youth, the Franklin Recreation Advisory Board has proposed the installation of a small sign to honor Nello P. Bassagnani at the entrance of Fletcher Field, located at 51 Peck Street in Franklin. Sorry, Nello. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Town of Franklin, approves the installation of a small sign at the entrance of Fletcher Field, located at 51 Peck Street in Franklin in recognition of Nello P. Bassagnani. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
It's a pleasure to move Resolution 25-54.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Jamie, are you going to hand it off?
I'm going to dish the rock over to Wayne and Ryan and the record.
Wayne, Ryan, Larry.
While they're coming up.
Or all of the above.
All of the above, it looks.
Looks like all of the above. Whatever you guys want. Whatever you want.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I saw everyone go to that microphone. That was where we were supposed to go.
That's quite all right.
The Recreation Advisory Board voted to request your approval to recognize lifelong resident Nello P. Bassagnani Jr. for his tireless efforts as a volunteer in the community and particularly in the youth sports organizations. Mr. Bassagnani passed away in March of 2022. The board feels that his many years of volunteerism and his dedication to youth of Franklin is worthy of recognition. I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments that Mr. Bassagnani did. Mr. Bassagnani served as a volunteer, an organizer, and an executive for many different associations. He, along with Dennis Bizani and Rich Usalino and Paul Sosse, whom Mr. Sosse and Mr. Bizani have already been recognized for their volunteerism in the town, they established the Franklin Girls Softball Association. And prior to that time, all of the girls in Franklin were required or had to play in the Franklin Youth Baseball Association. So they had to play with all the boys. And so Mr. Bassagnani, Mr. Bizani, Mr. Sosse, and Mr. Usalino formed the Franklin Girls Softball Association, which is still in existence today. He also served as a member of the Franklin Youth Baseball Program for many years, not only on the Board of Directors, but served as the president of that organization for several years. He was a member of the Pop Warner Football Board of Directors. And he also served on the Board of Directors of Franklin Gridiron Club. One of the major accomplishments that Mr. Bassagnani did was he served on the Board of Directors for the Southeastern Youth Baseball Association. Now, not only did he serve on the Board of Directors, he was one of the organizers along with members from Norton, Foxborough, Rentham, Plainville, Secoq, and Norwood. And up until the establishment of the SYBA, the only summer recreation baseball that was afforded to the youth of Franklin was small tournaments, very costly, and usually only was for three or four days. So the expenditure certainly wasn't worth what they were getting. And in fact, current Franklin Recreation Director, Mr. Jettie Surratt, played on one of those teams. That was very expensive, of course, he never realized that at the time. He also served as the president of the SYBA for four terms. In addition to the many hours that he served organizing, executing, he also was a coach. He coached in the Franklin Youth Baseball Program for several years. He was a fixture in the Franklin Football Pop Warner Program, coaching there for many years. He also coached in the St. Mary's CYO basketball team, the girls' basketball team. And he also served as a coach in the Southeastern Youth Baseball Association. One of the things that is kind of different from the youth sports is that Mr. Bassagnani was a regular contributor to the Franklin Historical Museum. Any of you who knew Mr. Bassagnani, he was a lifelong resident here and he took great pride in his town. And he was an avid yard sale and flea market person. And whenever he discovered items that were of significance to the Town of Franklin, he would donate them to the Historical Museum. And he made several contributions there. One item that I admitted from the letter to you, and don't know why it didn't get in there, was that Mr. Bassagnani, Dennis Bizani, and John Padula, along with his construction workers, rebuilt the building at Fletcher Field, which is closest to the street, which houses equipment, uniforms, and a concession stand. That building originally was wood, framed, burnt down. And Mr. Bizani and Mr. Bassagnani and Mr. Padula supervised the construction, the reconstruction of that building. So in conclusion, in recognition of the countless volunteer hours that Mr. Bassagnani expended in so many different ways, the Franklin Recreation Advisory Board recommends that the entranceway to the Fletcher Field Park be named the Nello P. Bassagnani Jr. Way. And we selected the Fletcher Field Park in particular because Mr. Bassagnani was a fixture there for many years, between coaching, umpiring, lining the fields, and then when there was a shortage of staff, actually mowing the grass at Fletcher Field. We ask for your approval to construct this sign. And we feel that it's a most appropriate way to recognize his many accomplishments.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, I just want to.
Sure, Ryan, go ahead.
Thank his family. A lot of his family members are here tonight to hear all these great things. And I want to appreciate them for coming out tonight. As Larry said, Nello picked me on his baseball team 42 years ago.
First mistake he made.
We won two championships.
Oh, I forgot to mention, he won championships.
One or two.
Collin McDermott was the name of the team, and they were the sponsors. So, you know, just dedicating the plaque is a way, a small way of us to say thank you to somebody who made such a difference in my life, many, many other young athletes' lives, and the whole town is better for that. So, I would just like to say that.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Wayne, anything to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Nello's a great guy. I was fortunate to play football with him in high school. Obviously, he's a very tough guy. But it's a great honor. He did an awful lot for the youth of Franklin, and we very much appreciate his efforts. And I commend Nello and his family for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Sheridan?
This is great. I'm just curious, so with the sign being the parking lot as you drive in, or?
Yeah, right at the entrance, yeah.
And will there be a plaque explaining some of this stuff about the accomplishment?
It's a small plaque, similar to the one we have at Beaver Pond. They don't have Nello's name on it.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Delarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also a member of the recreational committee. So, this was an easy one for me, considering that Nello was a good friend and a friend to my dad, who my dad would be 110 now, so that's going. I mean, so our families go back a long way. So, I really don't have a choice which way to, because Nello and my father would haunt me tonight when I went to bed. So, no, Nello's a great guy. He, matter of fact, I'm glad you put Junior in there, because actually Congressman Lynch always calls him Junior, because he was, Congressman Lynch was an ironworker, and he was trained by Nello. And he thinks the world of him. So, I just, and he called him Junior, and I was like, what are you talking about? Junior? No, it's Junior. But he's a great guy, and he's well-deserved, well-deserved.
Counselor Pellegrini.
It only took us three years to do this. We've been talking about it for a while. And you know what I'm sitting here and I'm thinking? We wait until someone dies. Wouldn't it have been wonderful if he was here? Which he may be. And hearing all of these wonderful things that he has done for the town. But better it was done now than now. Right? I've known Nello for many, many years. My husband has been friends with him, as with you guys, for many years too. And can't wait for the sign to go up, because we have a whole group that's going to be coming up for that purpose, okay? Great night, family. Known you since you were little kids. Some of you are still little kids. We're very proud of Nello. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pellegrini.
You said one last comment. Nello never missed a wake.
Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let the family know and let all of you gentlemen know, as a dad, I didn't get a chance to know Mr. Bassagnani, but I got to benefit from his legacy through my children. Because they have enjoyed many, many games on Fletcher through Franklin Youth Baseball. They've enjoyed many games through Franklin Youth Football. We've enjoyed many things as a family through the Gridiron. So, his legacy lives on. And it sounds like a legacy of caring and love and truly doing a lot of wonderful things for the community. So, a plaque is well, well-deserved. I will just note that Counselor Jones should never, ever be allowed to pronounce an Italian name ever again. So, in future readings, we should just assign that to someone else, just so that the insults don't come when the meeting is over. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just so the council knows, I actually polled the family members, and we came up with the idea of the sign at Fletcher Field. So, the family was involved in this whole process.
Thank you, Larry. Counselor Cormier Ledger, I even gave him a prelim and pronounced it correctly. But it didn't help.
And Debbie was mad as she was reading.
Again, just to say, you know, obviously, I'm a lifelong Franklin resident. I grew up at Fletcher Field, Dean Field, and Fletcher Field. But, and knew Nello well. And it certainly is a very well-deserved recognition of his contributions to the community. And we thank him, his family, very much for this. And thank the Recreation Department and committee for coming forward with this recognition. So, thank you.
And I apologize to Counselor Pellegrini for taking so long.
It's way past her bedtime. Counselor Jones.
Thank you.
First of all, I apologize for the mispronunciation of the name. First of all, Mrs. Chow's comment earlier, it's not Franklinite. I'm never be a Franklinite. I was born and raised in Watertown. Been here 20, almost 29 years with my wife, but that may be true. But the one thing I've come to learn is there are so many great individuals in this community that have made the Town of Franklin what it is today. And Nello, see, I pronounced it correctly that time. Is and sounds like a very wonderful individual who solely deserves this credit. And I'm 1,000% behind putting the sign up for him. And I want you folks to know, I appreciate you coming out and pushing this for him. It's a proud moment for him. I'm proud to hear of people who truly made an impact on this community like he did. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-54. A majority vote's required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night. Good luck.
There they go.
Just like the kids.
There they were, gone. Okay, Bylaw Amendment 25-942, a bylaw to amend the code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 170, Vehicles and Traffic. First reading, Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bylaw Amendment 25-942, a bylaw to amend the code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 170, Chapter 170, Vehicles and Traffic, be enacted by the Franklin Town Council at Chapter 170 of the Code of Town of Franklin, is amended at Section 170-15.D2 by inserting in appropriate alphabetical order Lewis Street as follows. Name the street, Lewis Street. Side bolt, location from East Central Street for a distance of 100 feet south. This bylaw amendment shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Bylaw Amendment 25-942 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. Jamie.
Through, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a bylaw amendment. I don't know if anybody in the audience is from Lewis Street, but obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but we certainly had a lot of concerns recently from residents who, I wasn't sure what he was doing there. Sorry?
That's the fastest I've seen Mark move in a long time.
What I say down the hallway is, Mark! I don't get anything like that. But anyways, I thought he needed to go to the bathroom. But, geez. Anyway, sorry. This is, I'm glad everybody saw what I saw. Was that bad, man? So, the Lewis Street residents have requested, there's been a lot of traffic issues and sightline issues from Lewis Street coming on to 140 and then into Lewis Street. And so, this will take 100-foot buffer, that there'll be no parking from the corner of 140 up Lewis Street, so that the sightlines are there. And thank you to Mike Maglio and the DPW and our police department for working on this. And so, this takes two readings. Tonight's the first. We'll have the second one in September.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Pellegrini.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mark. Shouldn't the bylaw say something about, I know it says the Section 170-15.D2, but shouldn't it say that we are, where this is going and exactly what's being done? So, if we were to look up this bylaw, we wouldn't know really what it was, unless going to the Section 170, it seems.
It's legally sufficient. That's part of a huge, multi-page section of listings, and that's inserting it. And that's the only change, rather than put a huge document together only to focus on that one line.
Well, we don't need a whole document. But I'm saying, shouldn't it say something to add to the parking, whatever?
No, you've got the appropriate reference to the section that's being changed.
And there'll be signs up, you know, on the street, obviously.
I realize that. But for the bylaw, the written bylaw here, should have mentioned that it had.
Basically, I personally worked with Julie on that. I'm comfortable it's legally sufficient.
You're comfortable with this?
Yes.
Well, to do research, it's not very good, because you're not going to see it right away. But that's okay. That's your opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Pellegrini. Any other counselors? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move Bylaw Amendment 25-942 to a second reading. A majority vote's required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-55, Acceptance of Gifts, Senior Center $1,571, Library $970, Historical Museum $90. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-55, Acceptance of Gifts, Franklin Senior Center, Franklin Public Library, and Franklin Historical Museum. Whereas the Franklin Senior Center, Franklin Public Library, Franklin Historical Museum have received generous donations in the total amount of $2,631 to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Senior Center, $1,571 donations to be applied at the discretion of the Senior Center through the Council on Aging Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Franklin Public Library, $970 donations to be used at the children's programs at the discretion of the library director or the children's librarian. Franklin Historical Museum, $90 donations to be used at the discretion of the Franklin Historical Museum to provide programs and services to the Franklin community. Donor information is included in the August 13, 2025 Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Council, the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Franklin Senior Center, Franklin Public Library, and the Franklin Historical Museum gratefully accepts these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-55.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, again, just a continuation of thanks to the community for continuing to give to the Senior Center, the library, Historical Museum, Fire Department, all of the different groups, and corporations, businesses, individuals, all of them. We gratefully appreciate it. So, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-55. A majority vote's required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town Administrators report.
Yeah, through, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of updates that were on the agenda, and then I have a few more. One, I do have good news on the Franklin Ridge Senior Housing Project, which shields, you know, I guess it's been the 10 years I've been here too. Mark and I are working with the proponent. We are wrapping up one final ZBA meeting that's going to be required to deal with the comprehensive permit. We expect, knock on wood, that the financing will be approved, hopefully in September and October. And then a shovel will go in the ground for the foundation. We'll get as far as we can before the ground freezes up. If people go up there now, they'll see the roadway's been built, the access points are there. We're hearing that it's about an 18-month project to construction. So, there is now literally light at the end of the tunnel, which, if everything goes right. I just want to also clarify, because I think you guys have gotten some questions, and I've gotten them too. There will be proper outreach for the waiting list. There is no list yet. There will not be a list for 12 months at least. I do want to give just expectations, because I've been asked at the Senior Center. The proponent will go down and do a series of outreach seminars on this down at the Senior Center. I do want to make sure everybody also understands there are income eligibility guidelines. And so, it's not something that everybody's going to be eligible for, obviously. But it will be 100%, you know, affordable units for senior citizens. So, thank you to all of you on the council. Thank you to the community, the council, everybody. We're now finally getting there. And I also, good news on that project. We did, as you all remember, Congressman Alton Kloss got us like about 850,000 grant. That is, we've already paid that through. The Trump administration did not take that back. We spent it too fast for them to know what was going on. And that is what built the road up there. So, you know, these are little things that go on, on a day-to-day basis, where I'm running around, and Amy Love and Mike Maglio and Brian obviously did a lot on this, but let's hustle the bustle, let's get moving and use the money. We have spent down all of that money, so that's good news. And the Healydrick School Administration, Secretary Augustus, has still maintained their commitment to the tax credits. And so, we've got those lined up. And so, I'm anticipating that hopefully in the next couple of months, the financing will go through. And so, that's really good news. So, that, there really is truly some light at the end of this tunnel. And hopefully, within a year from now, we'll be able to go do a waiting list, a lottery, how it goes forward. And we'll certainly do many outreach sessions throughout the community. We'll probably have them come do one here, go down to the Senior Center and stuff like that. So, that's really great news. And for people that are struggling with the housing needs, 60 units of affordable senior housing, which hopefully we can, by statute, we can only prioritize a minimum, at least a minimum of 70%, or maximum 70% local preference, which is the maximum allowed in law. But hopefully, those 70% of folks from Franklin will be able to free up also some single-family homes in town, too. So, this could be something that really could make a difference. And I can't believe it, don't go there. I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it. But I feel like, I feel like a lot of hope and optimism and enrichment that this is finally getting there after the unbelievable amounts of work that have been going on. So, I really, huge shout-out to the man that just ran by me really quick, Mark, who's been working with the attorneys for the proponent. And we hope, I know, I'm glad you didn't fall. Oh, Sharon. So, that's really good news. The second piece, I added in a national. That one will be a lot of tears that will go into that ceremony, sure, someday. That will be really, really great. I was asked by National Grid to put out this announcement on smart meters. They're going out throughout the community to put in meters at various homes and businesses to try to accurately capture electricity costs better. I give them a lot of credit. I know they're not always everybody's best friend, but National Grid really does do a great job on a lot of leading things, and I thank them for that. So, they asked me to put this in the packet, so I did. One bit of bad news, although I was glad they were here while they were here, we did get notice, unfortunately, that Cold Chain Technologies, who everybody, I think, remembers very well, unfortunately, is moving their entire headquarters operation to another state. So, there will be 82 affected employees, not all Franklin residents necessarily. But they are moving their headquarters to states that are going to sound familiar to you of where a lot of companies are moving, Texas, Tennessee, and Pennsylvania. And so, from a business competitive environment, I think we all should just take a moment to remind ourselves that for commercial businesses like this, it's a very tumultuous time, and reputation and state business climate is a very important thing. Or you have this. Now, for the audience, really quickly, that doesn't know who Cold Chain Technologies might be, we lured them to Franklin six years ago, I believe, maybe seven, when we did have staff capacity to do these types of things. We now are not going to have that staff capacity anymore to do these things. But we were able to bring them here on a tax increment finance project in 2018 or 19. And they were the company that actually devised the casings that were shipped all around the world that actually were the cold casings, the freezers, if you will, that shipped all of the Moderna vaccines around the entire globe, right in the middle of the pandemic during the lockdown. Their corporate headquarters was right here. So, they want So they won all sorts of awards that all of you remember, as they should have. Their headquarters up there have like goosebump-inducing pictures of the staff and as they were working around the clock to get out vaccines throughout the world. We were very proud to have them here, and it's sad to see them go. We obviously wish them the best and hope that their time in those other states are as productive as they were here. At least, I can say, at least they were here when they had global prominence, and it was really great to have them. They were a great company to work with. And then a last couple notes. Huge congratulations to Mary O'Neill and Randy J., who just stepped down as the Chair and Clerk of the Disability Commission. Thank you to Ally and Lauren Sanford and Kelly Quinlan for putting on a little ceremony. It was very light. Several of us went down to see Mary and show her our love. They have been on the commission for years. Mary has been the leader of that commission, and there's a lot of new members, which is wonderful, and it was very nice to see them have a ceremony. And we want to thank Jeff for stopping by as well, Representative Roy, to give them some awards. I want to congratulate Jimmy West, Deputy Chief Jimmy West, for getting accepted into the FBI National Academy, which is huge for Jimmy. And as I joked with them, I said, congratulations, get through the academy before there is no more FBI. I said, please get down there. And, you know, Chief Lynch was also graduated the FBI Academy, and I think it just shows you how incredibly well-respected our police department is. And finally, there are Police Station Building Committee tours. We had one this week. I know you'll mention this, too, Mr. Chairman, but August 28, 27 will be the next Police Station Building Committee meeting. If you are interested in this issue, that is the meeting to attend, because we're going to be going through all of the work on the site plan analysis, on the surveying of the properties in town. They're going to go through all 12,000 properties in the community and looking at site selection. There will be not a site determined that night. And then in September and October, there will be open houses. The committee took a tour this week. A few residents did show up, which was wonderful. But if people look on the outside and have an impression of the police station, all of you on the council should be going to those open houses. All of the other members of the elected board should be going there. The community should go down there. Don't worry, the chief is not going to lock everybody in jail when they get there. But this is a really unique opportunity. Steve came, Sherlock, actually, and also Franklin TV. Thank you for doing the video. You can go online and look at the video. We'll have a website out in a few weeks. But I really want, when we put out the announcement of the dates in a couple of weeks, I really hope the community can really show up at those police stations and see what our officers and our detectives, our female officers. There's barely a locker room there for our female officers at all. And some of the areas in that building are absolutely flat-out disgusting. And I think the community will understand exactly why this has been a project on the Capitol Plan for many years. So thank you very much for that time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, Subcommittee, Ad-Hoc Committee reports. I don't think got anything. As Jamie just alluded to, the Police Station Building Committee, we just had a walkthrough at the police station last week, you know, just to kind of get a feel for it. We've got two more coming up in September, walkthroughs that the public can come to, as Jamie alluded to. Our next actual meeting will be August 27 here in council chambers, where we'll have more information from the project manager and the architect. So with that, future agenda items. Counselor Sheridan.
Yeah, I'd like to get clarification about the changes to the Stow-Bots project, the add-in the floor.
Do you want me to address it?
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman, I did, was going to make a note of this. My apologies. So the council legally cannot rescind any votes. The application has been forth to the state. I totally understand where a lot of the residents are coming from. However, I need to encourage every single person who's against this project, they've got to channel all of those comments and all of that energy to the zoning board. I want to also make sure I'm clear about something. When you went through the Friendly 40B process, the project was modified multiple times after it went through Planning Board, Conservation, and here. And I completely understand and absolutely agree with a lot of the residents that this is a change project. However, one of the things that the ZBA has had to do is to compare apples to apples within current code and within current parking requirements. They needed to at least see what that original proposal was like. So there's no opportunity to rescind the vote, that there's just nothing that can happen. The council could share their concerns via a letter or correspondence, as a group, about the many issues, because I think we all agree, whether you voted for the project or not, or whether you wanted to see it move forward or not, changing the entire design around. And I do want to speak to the comment about the ZBA, it's a fact that they listen to us. They actually don't oftentimes listen to us. They do listen a lot. But just as an example, this council voted down another complex on Grove Street. I wrote a seemingly endless 10-page letter to the ZBA with my concerns about that project, and the ZBA did not listen to us, and they went ahead and approved the project anyway. So just because I nominate them and you ratify them does not mean that you necessarily listen to us. And so I really, I do think that the comments that people are bringing forward about the environmental sensitivity of the site have absolutely been acknowledged by the ZBA and the chairman. And the process is also going through the Conservation Commission right now. Residents need to focus on channeling their energy, their comments, their attendance, and flooding this room and Zoom, whatever they want to do, at the Conservation Commission and at the ZBA meetings. Obviously, we're here to listen to folks, too. I'm not saying that people can't come to these meetings. I just don't want people to have a false expectation that somehow we can have another vote and we can rescind it all. And I know the ZBA meetings, because I've gone to them and I've attended them. The scope and size of the, scope and size of the project have absolutely been acknowledged by the ZBA. That, again, does not say to the residents, you should stop now, just because they've acknowledged it, you should continue to offer all these comments and feedback. And unfortunately, this is part of what every resident goes through in every community when they go to Planning Board and ZBA meetings, that, you know, unfortunately, you have to go to a lot of meetings and continue on. So I hope that answers a few questions. I meant to mention that a minute ago, but thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, Counselor Frangello? Nothing. Counselor Hamblin?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Comey, Elijah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Counselor Delarco and I were approached at the farmer's market by a gentleman looking for an update on the Snet Trail Extension project that ends at the railroad. So if we could just, you know, I know at one point we approved it, and we, there was some money and some railroad money, and Council, Rep. Austin Kloss was, I mean, there was like this whole big thing. So like, if we could just get an update, Jamie, at a future meeting.
You're going to get a little bit of an updated executive session. Can I, it's on the agenda, executive session.
Well, but maybe something for the public to be able to hear.
Once we have that, then we'll be able to go.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Plaguey?
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate what a point you had made earlier to add to our future agenda, to discuss creating a policy.
Correct.
At least to have the discussion similar to what the school committee has. The gentleman's right. It's really, really tough, and as a clerk, it's tough for me to vote on something when we don't actually have written policy to support.
Understood.
It's, that's particularly difficult. I'd love to see that on a future agenda.
Well, I gave him the directive, so. Counselor Delarco?
I guess reiterate, Counselor Jones, that's all.
Okay, no future agenda items for me. Counselor comments. Counselor Hamblin?
I was like trying to hide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair. I'm really excited about the Franklin Ridge update, Jamie. Thank you so much for that. And I'd like to thank everyone who came in tonight to talk and just give us their opinions. This is the stuff that makes it fun for me, right? Like, to hear what everybody's thinking, then I go, and I don't sleep all night, and I think about it. And so it takes me a while to digest everything, because some nights, there's a lot, right? But that's what makes it, that's the good thing. And we'll see you in September, I guess, right?
September 3.
September 3.
Counselor Plaguey?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tried to think what I had written down here that I wanted to mention tonight. I have a question for Jamie, or actually for Brutus. Through you.
What's, go ahead, go ahead.
Did we get some summer help that's coming in? Because I noticed that the pumping station across from me has been, the lawn has been cut by the town, not by a resident, like Melanie had seen somebody one time.
I saw somebody.
Uh, no. Excuse me.
Brutus cut it.
We're just getting ready to public works, director.
Who's doing it?
The, our folks did.
Huh?
Our folks did. The sewer, the water sewer.
So they, they had some time that they were able to do that, because it was really going to pot. So thank you. You don't have to explain anything else.
I would like to say, there's a lot of places in town that are going to pot, because we're not getting out there like we were able to. We had to cut the summer health program, which was huge for us. I mean, and I'll say it, and people talk about finances, we're hiring these college kids for 15, 15-hour, and they do a lot of work. They do, we're not, you know, the other guys just can't do supplemental. So what is the trash barrels, what is mowing, whether weeds out there, you know, whacking stuff down, it's just, we just don't have the staff. I mean, eventually it's going to get done, but it's not going to be maintained like people have become used to in the past. We just physically can't do it.
And how are we doing through your decision? How are we doing with the trash now with the different fields?
So we have, we moved a lot of trash barrels, some we took out of, you know, different locations in town. There are none there. Other ones we've moved to the edge, you know, so they, so if they're going inside and they're actually playing, they're bringing the stuff out there. I will say, initially, we had a lot of stuff down in Beaver Pond, but that seemed to slow down a lot, obviously, because, you know, the summer, people started getting used to it. I mean, it's kind of like, I always use a, it's a very positive thing. Our residents are very good with our water conservation program that we started 20 years ago. It just takes people time to get used to it. So it is getting better. The one thing I will say that I talked to Jamie about, the amount of dog poop that we take away is unbelievable, that I wasn't even really aware of it with the trash barrels, because people do, there's so many more dogs out there now because of COVID, and we're just picking up a lot of dog poop. So, but we're working through it.
Thank you. You still have it, Counsel Plaguey. You're all set. Counselor Sheridan? Counselor Comey, Elijah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know the meeting's long, and I know we have a long night ahead, so just a couple of points. First of all, Brutus and your DVW staff, thank you, thank you, thank you for the Charles River Farm Road project going on. Can't tell you as a resident how just thankful I am to see the streets getting some much-needed attention over there and to see the crews out there working. Makes a big difference. I think at some point, we should look at the permitting process, Jamie. This doesn't need comment, just me saying, for businesses that are coming to the town and getting a permit around their neck to go door-to-door. Like, it is, we, like, and, you know, the police had to obviously issue some pretty heavy fines, and some folks got pretty scared a couple of weeks ago. I wonder if it's worth it, right? I wonder if that's even something as a town that we should just take a look at and maybe just do away with altogether. And these businesses have to come up with another way to be able to solicit and get business, because clearly it's getting abused. Clearly, people are home and scared to answer their doors, and they don't know what to ask for, they don't know what to look for, they don't know if somebody's legit or not legit, all happening at very late hours of the night from the reports that we're hearing. So that, just to be looked at, would be, I think, appreciated by a lot of people in town. And I just want to personally say to everybody that spoke up against what their concerns tonight about what we are affectionately referring to as the Stow-Bots project, even though I know they want us to call it something else now. I hear you. I agree with you. I personally don't, didn't vote for it, and I think the project never should have gone forward in the first place. However, this body is limited in what we can do going forward. That ship's kind of sailed. So I hope, as Jamie mentioned, you continue to bring those concerns to ZBA. Many of the concerns you're voicing now were voiced several months ago, a year ago, whenever that came before us, the environmental stuff. None of that's changed. Like, those variances, they've grown, but the concerns about parking, the concerns about abutters, the concerns, 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 right? So I hear you. I wish there was more that I could do, but I hope that, I hope that the ZBA is able to take all that into consideration and listen. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Comey, Elijah. Counselor Frangello?
Yeah, we didn't have a GATRA meeting, so I didn't have the update there. But GATRA is separately doing two things that I think would be useful to know. One is there's an ongoing survey to feed into their five-year comprehensive plan. That survey can be found on their website and on Facebook, and it closes at the end of this month. The survey, if you take GATRA and you want to speak to some of your experiences and services that you'd like to see expanded, take that survey. There's also a public meeting, a virtual public meeting on August 20 at 6:00 p.m. Again, you can find the information and link to that on Facebook and on the website.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello.
One other thing.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I had the pleasure of going to Food Pantry earlier today, where they have gone, they got a new refrigerated truck and a few other donations totaling roughly $150,000 from BJ's to really expand and improve their services. So, you know, huge kudos to the Food Pantry team, who continues to find opportunities to expand. And they are, in turn, donating our current truck to the Natick Food Pantry to, you know, pass it on. So a lot of really good stuff there, but a huge thank you to BJ's for chipping in for that.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to thank a couple of people first, all of you that spoke about Stow-Bots tonight. Appreciate all your feedback. Again, that's kind of, that ship has sailed, but please, like Jamie said, go to the zoning board of appeals, please. All you Senior Center people, all the different factions, thank you for speaking tonight. Really appreciate that. And possibly four more meetings for me. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things on my list. First off, Counselor Comey, Elijah, thank you for bringing up that the people that were going around soliciting the neighbors, that I was following that myself. That's a scary situation. You know, they, whenever they come to my house, the first thing I ask for, it's good to have dogs, I've discovered that they're great doorbells, but whenever they come to my house, the first thing I ask for is their permit. I want to see it. Don't even tell me what your business is before you don't show me a permit. They should show us permits. They should have them properly displayed, and they should keep a clear distance, or we should have something in writing that says you keep a clear distance from somebody's front door when you're making solicitations, just because it scares people, especially in the neighborhoods. So you're absolutely right, Ted. Debbie, guess what?
What?
Almost, two Saturdays ago, I clocked 10 miles of walking, weed-whacking the Davis There Elementary School. So you'd be happy to know that. Is that for 10 miles, or is that for weed-whacking? I don't know. I can't quite figure out what that is.
Good for you.
But the fact of the matter is, you're right. The weeds, the growth, it's tough that we're not able to fund the summer, the help that we need to get these things done. But then again, I get my exercise in. I waste a little weed-whacking, but such is good life. To my serious point for tonight, first off, thank you, Jamie, for the report on Franklin Ridge. It's really exciting. Of all the things that I've heard lately, that's one of the more exciting things. To Jane, to your point earlier, I just want to make a simple statement. If I had the opportunity to rescind my vote tonight in regards to 440, 4E Central Street, If I had the opportunity to rescind my vote tonight in regards to 4E Central Street, AKA the Stobart property, I would, and I would do it for several reasons. One is, obviously, listening to what the citizens have to say, but mainly because I'm not particularly happy with the changes that have been made. You know, when we went into this process originally with the Friendly 40B proposal, that was meant that the developers were supposed to be working with us to the en masse degree, so that we would understand, we would all collectively work together to make whatever the project was move forward. But what's currently on the agenda at the zoning board of appeals is not what was presented to us here at the town council. You know, going from three stories to four stories, making all of these 31-some-odd, you know, requests for, to change things, without even so much as making, in my opinion, what would be a common courtesy to at least come back to the council and say, "Hey, this is what's changed. We'd like to talk with you about these changes to see if you would agree with these." But instead, everything's been kind of kept at the zoning board of appeals, which I get. It's in their purview now. It's past our bench. But I will be reaching out to the members of the zoning board of appeal to tell them how I feel. If it were me, I'd say, "Let's just stop the presses and rethink all of this." So, other than that, Mr. Chairman, that about covers it, because I know I kept, I went past my time limit as it is.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, Stobarts, I was totally against that back then, and I sure as hell is totally against it now, but, I mean, we just got to, you got to fight it at the zoning board. And, you know, that's, I will reach out to all the members there, too, and do the best you can, but, like you say, it's a disaster. That was, that was totally wrong. And I, too, have a dog, but I also carry nine millimeters of something.
Me, too. It's funny you say that.
You know what I mean? That's, that's, that usually scares him off a little bit, by the way.
He's chasing coyotes.
But, yeah, and it's sad about the summer help. I'll be honest with you, my son's 30 years old, and he worked four years down there, you know, during his college years, and he learned a lot, you know, and it's actually, they teach people a lot, you know, so it's, it's great for me, because he does all my landscaping now, so it's beautiful, you know, so, but he learned a lot, and that is sad that we can't help kids out like that, so, just so people know that. So that was it, Chairman. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Okay, just not to recite what everybody has already said, but I think it's really, it feels good to me that we have people coming to council meetings and getting engaged in the issues that the community is facing, and we can't get enough of that. People have to continue to come out, speak on the issues that are concerning to them, and, you know, you're going to learn as to what's going on, what are the issues that we have to deal with on a regular basis, and how best to deal with them. So please, keep that engagement. I thought tonight was a great example of engagement from the community with the council on a few issues. By the same token, I said I went to the Finance Committee meeting the other night and sat there and listened to the new, the new Finance Committee members and the engagement they had regarding the issues before them. It's all great stuff. We need more of that. We need more community involvement. So with that, I will say, we do have a need to, for executive session. To review and approve the minutes from Town Council Executive Sessions. We also have a need for Exemption Three, Collective Bargaining, the Franklin Police Association, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, I so declare. Exemption Six, considering the purchase and exchange lease or value of real property because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body in reference to the CSX land. And then another reason for, didn't give me that, so I so declare on that one. And on Exemption Six, considering the purchase and exchange lease of value of real property because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, other property, I so declare. Exemption Two, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, go to executive session for the purposes mentioned. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Clerk will call the roll. We will not return to open session, so everybody else can go home.
Sheridan. Cormier-Ledger?
Yes.
Frangello? Yes. Chandler?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Plegory?
Yes.